Good evening. I call this November 10th, 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to social distancing and limited public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. There are four council members present tonight in council chambers and three participating remotely to ensure that proper distancing and room capacity directives are followed. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Active citizen participation is always important to town council. Public comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. In-person public comments will be accepted during this meeting with one speaker allowed in council chambers at a time. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page, and on November 13th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to the www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on Town of Morrisville's social media pages. Tonight's meeting includes one public hearing. Public hearing comments received from interested parties providing full name and address via the publichearings@townofmorrisville.org email address from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today will be read verbatim during the public hearing for up to three minutes each, for a total of 30 minutes. In-person public hearing comments will be accepted during this meeting with one speaker allowed in council chambers at a time. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. At this time, I'd like to ask Eric Smith, our town clerk, to conduct a roll call of council members.
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Steve Rao will provide the invocation.
Thank you. Please bow our heads in prayer. We come together in the mosaic of Morrisville, one of the most diverse and inclusive towns in North Carolina, on the eve of Veterans Day, to thank our brave American heroes who sacrificed so much every day for our nation. We pray for any soldier, wherever they may be, here or anywhere in the world, and to any families who have lost loved ones this year, or any who are battling or suffering from illness. During the dark and uncertain times of this global pandemic, we also come together as a community to celebrate Diwali, a celebration of light over darkness, good over evil, and hope over despair. Please continue to remind us, God, that the light of love, the light of hope, the divine light of generosity will always lift us out of the darkness, that our light is not dependent on the division and darkness around us, as long as we are willing to show our own light to the world through good works, and if we open our hearts to love and kindness. Finally, on the heels of a divisive election, we pray that you give President-elect Joe Biden and his Vice President-elect Kamala Harris and their families the strength and wisdom to lead our nation and inspire all Americans from all walks of life, from all political parties, from all faiths and ethnicities, to live our lives every day as so eloquently expressed in our Pledge of Allegiance. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen. Speaking of which, if we could all stand who are able to for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Vote allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and second to invoke Rule 19.
I'll make a motion to invoke Rule 19.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Rao. Town Clerk Smith, if you would please conduct the roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson? Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We are at item five, adoption of regular agenda. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have any such conflicts?
No.
Seeing none, there has been a request by the town manager and town attorney to have a closed session just before we adjourn this evening. If someone would make the motion to adopt tonight's agenda, including a closed session, that would be great.
I make a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda with the addition of a closed session at the end of the meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda with the addition of a closed session passes.
Thank you, sir. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Approval of the September 21st meeting minutes, a resolution approving the Wake County non-cash rebates, tax exemptions, and penalties reports, and a resolution approving an amendment to the 2020 town council meeting schedule. Does any council member wish to remove anything from the agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda, consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Town Clerk Smith, will you do the honors?
Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Okay, moving on to item eight, administrative reports. There is one administrative report tonight, FY 2021 First Quarter Financial Report. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none from remote, we will move on to item nine. There are six presentations tonight. The introduction of Linda Frenette, Morrisville Chamber of Commerce President, recognition of Board of Adjustment Members, a proclamation recognizing America Recycles Day, a proclamation recognizing World Pancreatic Cancer Day, a facility safety options presentation, and an FY 2020 fund balance update. Martha Page, Town Manager, will make the first presentation. Ms. Page.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor and privilege to introduce our new Morrisville Chamber of Commerce President, Linda Frenette. She's been at work for about a month. We've met for coffee already, which I assume we'll do on a regular basis, and she's already hosted a golf tournament that I think got started when it was 20 degrees outside. So she's already working on behalf of Morrisville, and we're pleased to have her aboard. A little bit about her is she is a Michigan native that has made North Carolina her home for the past 20 years. Her career experience includes economic development, marketing, and both nonprofit and membership organization management, with six years of Chamber of Commerce experience and leadership experience, most recently in Fuquiverina. In addition to her BBA degree in marketing, Linda is a 2019 graduate of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Institute for Organization Management. She brings to Morrisville a passion for entrepreneurial development, business retention efforts, and the building of a tight-knit chamber membership body. She's looking forward to discovering the many attributes of Morrisville and making meaningful contributions to its continued growth and success. So welcome, Linda, on behalf of the Town of Morrisville. Please feel free to come up and speak to council directly.
Thank you, Town Manager Page, and Mayor, and members of the council. I am honored to be here tonight, and more honored to even be part of the Morrisville community through my role with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm looking forward to meeting all of you individually and working closely with the town to further the business development in the community of Morrisville. And please don't hesitate to reach out to me at any time, and hopefully we can all meet very soon, and hopefully in unmasked conditions soon as well.
Welcome. We appreciate you joining the team. Okay, we'll move on to the next presentation. "In an effort to streamline processes and make a more efficient use of town resources, the Board of Adjustment was recently dissolved and their duties transferred elsewhere. The BOA has played an important role in the town for many years, reviewing variances, appeals, and other quasi-judicial applications, and some of the members have served on the board for many years. On behalf of the town, myself, and the rest of the town council, we would like to thank the BOA for the time and energy they have volunteered to help make Morrisville a better place. As a token of our appreciation, we have plaques we would like to present to each of the immediately former members. Unfortunately, not all of the members could be here this evening. For those who could not attend in person, arrangements will be made to have their plaques delivered to them. When Planning Director Stiegel calls your name, please come up to be recognized, grab your plaque, and if you'd like to address the group, we'd welcome that." Go ahead.
So I just want to say thank you. I really enjoyed my time on the Board of Adjustment, and I'm sorry to see it go. But still, one learned a lot, even though in the end we were not getting too many cases. But I think the UDO, the legal stuff, one learned a lot with it. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have served the town, or my community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me have Patty Chang.
So I wasn't notified in advance we were supposed to say anything, so this is a very impressive plaque. Thanks for the opportunity to serve the town, the great learning experience. We learned a lot about what quasi-judicial boards do for municipal governments. Anyway, best wishes, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have Gerard Falzone. Gerard served five terms on the BOA and was chairman for many years.
Thank you, all neighbors. It was a pleasure to work with all of you, to serve the town, and you all set a great example for all of us to get better in the spirit of service to all of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Jack Walton. Jack is our longest-serving member, having been on the board for nine terms.
Hi, I gave someone a copy of an agenda from 1987 that I sort of wanted to show you all, so you could get an idea of what a Board of Adjustment used to do. I don't know if that's where you could show it. Anybody where they could show it?
We're pulling it up just one second.
I'm logging through the chat. Yeah.
I guess we're not prepared to do that.
Hold on, he's working on it.
It's on the P drive.
Okay. Give me a second, and I will... Is it in the briefs, or just the P drive?
I'm writing my briefs.
Right here, or the DOC?
Okay, this is one night's agenda from December 15th, 1987, of the Board of Adjustments. If you scroll down, you'll notice how many items they had to meet on. Nine items. And we didn't have anything to meet on for several years. Something changed. I'll let you figure out. You all are smart people. I'll let you figure out what changed, and why suddenly the Board of Adjustment became useless. It wasn't the board that did that. Anyway, I've been on the board for 29 years, and a lot of things have changed in the town. Some are good, some are bad. Getting rid of Board Adjustments was a very bad thing. I don't know if you all had a chance to actually hear what our objections were. We were guaranteed that you would hear our objections, but I don't think you did. I read over, I saw the video of the meeting. I don't, I don't see that you all heard all our objections, but you made your choice, and the power had gradually been taken away from the Board of Adjustments, as it was. So yeah, we didn't have anything to do, but it's because our authority had been taken away. So, uh, thank you very much, and enjoyed serving for 29 years. I learned something about the rule of law, and knowing what, respecting the law. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, I also did want to recognize Eric Kuzak and Raj Narayana, they cannot be here this evening, but also served on the BOA.
Excellent. Thank you very much. At this time, if any council members would like to thank the existing members, and the other two aren't here for their service, now would be a time. I'll start by saying thank you very much for your time and your service. It was a very important thing that you did on our behalf for many years, and we couldn't thank you enough. So thank you so much for that. Mayor Protam?
So I also will extend my thanks. And Jack, at a meeting, I don't know when, a couple of months ago, I mentioned you, I mentioned all of you, and kind of thanked you at that time. So I'm happy that I could thank you in person for your service. But, Jack, I mentioned how I have never known the Board of Adjustment without you. So I, you were on the Board of Adjustment when I moved here to the Town of Morrisville. So I really thank you for your service, and for all you've done for the town. And I know each one of you will stay involved and will continue to help us, and that's important for us, important for you, and overall important for this community. So thank you so much for your service. I appreciate it.
So thank you all very much. Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, just thank you so much for your service, and, you know, I know that you'll be around to serve us more. There's a lot of great things going on in Morrisville, and we're going to need your help and assistance. So I know all of you, and Jack, thanks for your many, many, many years of service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Our next item is Councilmember Robati will read the proclamation recognizing America Recycles Day. Ms. Robati?
Proclamation recognizing America Recycles Day. Whereas America Recycles Day was started in 1997 as part of the National Keep America Beautiful program to promote recycling and recognize the protection and preservation of our natural resources. And whereas each year, thousands of communities host events to raise awareness of the importance of making recycling an everyday habit and committing to the three Rs of waste reduction: reduce, reuse, and recycle. And whereas through the town's curbside and multi-resident recycling and yard waste program, and in conjunction with ongoing educational efforts throughout Wake County, the town's recycling efforts continue to grow and attempt to reduce, and attempt to reduce the amount of waste being sent to landfills. And whereas all citizens and business leaders are encouraged to decrease the amount of waste that is produced in our homes, schools, community, and workplaces by making the three Rs of recycling a daily priority. And whereas everyone can join the effort to be a more sustainable society by reducing consumption, purchasing products made from recycled goods, and donating unwanted materials that will help ensure a healthy and safe environment for present and future generations. And whereas we can all work together to reduce, reuse, and recycle every day of the year. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim November 15th, 2020, as America Recycles Day in the Town of Morrisville, and encourages all citizens and businesses to share in the responsibility for the beauty of our town and our environment by reducing, reusing, and recycling. Adopted this 10th day of November, 2020.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam Johnson will read the proclamation recognizing World Pancreatic Cancer Day.
So while I take no pleasure in reading this, I do it with a sense of honor and a duty. So this proclamation is recognizing World Pancreatic, Pancreatic Cancer Day. Whereas in 2020, an estimated 57,600 people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and 47,000 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer surpasses breast cancer in 2019 to become the third-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, and it is projected to become the second-leading cause by 2023. Whereas compared to the other major cancers, pancreatic cancer has the lowest five-year survivor rate at just 10%. Whereas symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in late stages, and 72% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. Whereas approximately 1,500 deaths will occur in North Carolina in 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. Whereas there will be an estimated 558,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2025. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Morrisville are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim November 19th, 2020, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Town of Morrisville.
Thank you.
And I would, can I just add?
Of course.
I would urge everyone on November 19th, which will be World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Town of Morrisville, to wear purple. Purple is a color that is shared by many cancers and diseases, but it is the color of pancreatic cancer has adopted, and I urge you all to wear purple on November 19th. And this is, this is an important awareness method for us here in the Town of Morrisville, because I know that there are staff here at the Town of Morrisville, and there are many of our citizens here in the Town of Morrisville that have been or currently are affected by pancreatic cancer. So I appreciate you all allowing me to present this proclamation and read it tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Giselle Rodriguez, Public Works Director, will provide a facilities safety options presentation. Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. It is quite a treat to be able to see you face-to-face. It's been a while, sure has been a while. Well, protecting the facility and health of our residents continues to be a top priority for the Town of Morrisville. This evening, I would like to present to you an initiative for the reduction of the risk of exposure to COVID-19 by upgrading touchless facilities in town facilities. In accordance with the, let me move forward the slide.
Mouse is in the drawer underneath. You see the sliding drawer?
I think I got it right here. Okay, right there. In accordance with the Reconnect Morrisville Plan and following CDC guidelines, there are several tasks that we have implemented and things that we have completed, and the cost for all of those things that we have completed right now is over $36,000. Not to go into detail into all of those, but it goes from deep cleaning on several facilities to continuously providing measures that will continue to enhance social distancing and provide reduction of risk. There are also some ongoing measures that we are taking in place to continue the disinfection of our facilities, including picnic tables, and also making some minor touchless fixtures conversion that has already been completed. And one of the other things that we are doing ongoing is requesting that any new town projects will implement the use of touchless fixtures within the new buildings and new facilities. The facilities crew has completed a high-level inventory of all the fixtures within the town facilities that could be converted to touchless fixtures to promote lasting reduction of risk. That total cost for the upgrade, based on the inventory that we have completed, exceeds $180,000, and we estimate that the timeline to complete that project will take about 12 months, including 70% of labor being completed by in-house staff. As with any good project, there are some potential challenges that we may face, and that includes just facing additional improvements that will have to be done once we assess each fixture individually. And one of our facilities is owned by Wake County, so anything that we do to that facility will have to be previously approved by them. As we think about this project, we think about $180,000 is probably a good size of money, so we decided to provide an approach that provides a four-phase approach, kind of splitting it into four, and divided by different priority levels. So Phase One will focus on frequently touched surfaces that are exposed to the public, and with that, I would say is previously primarily related to parks. Those are our facilities that are exposed primarily to the public, or any town buildings that are exposed to the public. That will be our number-one priority, being Phase One. The cost for that will be over $98,000, and it will take about seven months to complete. The second phase will be the frequently touched surfaces that are exposed to employee use. And Phase Three will be fixtures that have a lower use, and Phase Four will be areas that have a lower risk. If we take a closer look into Phase One, Phase One, we could actually split it in two additional subsections, being Phase 1A and Phase 1B. For Phase 1A, we would like to focus on park facilities, and for For Phase 1A, we would like to focus on park facilities, and for Phase 1B, we'll be focused on town buildings. The cost for 1A will exceed $85,000, and the cost for 1B will be around $12,000. I have provided the list of the different fixtures that will be included into each phase so that you can see the differences and how we have actually split the priorities on these particular phases. And as I mentioned before, this phase will take about seven months to complete, assuming that we use 70% town staff, but we can reduce the timeline, but it will also increase costs if we outsource a lot of that labor. We are not alone when it comes to protecting the facilities and the health of our residents, so we have contacted a lot of our peers to see what they have been doing during this time. One thing that we have learned, you can see the breakdown on this slide, one thing that we have learned is that the municipalities that we surveyed, they have done little to no change to upgrade their fixtures. And in summary, I can say that the town of Morrisville has invested a great deal of effort and money to successfully reduce the risk of exposure, and we are a leading example in this region by just by what we have already completed and just being able to have a high-level inventory to be able to look at what we can do moving forward. We are definitely a leading example on this area. So with this, I'll leave you Brandon Surima, who will discuss the evaluation of potential modifications to this room, the council chambers.
Thank you, Giselle. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I will take the second part of this. So in addition to, sorry, let me get myself located here. There we go. The other portion of facility safety that we want to share some information with you is on council chambers. And as you can see with four of you sitting here, we can't fit seven of you back into this space as it currently exists with social distancing. So before even speaking to that, do want to remind you, obviously, we have not met here the last meeting or two, and so just for your information and also to clarify why that was, we had to do some remediation related to a prior humidity issue. So nothing to do with the ongoing pandemic, an isolated issue with the HVAC system that handles this room, and that is a separate system, so does not touch any other portion of the building. We did discover some mold spores that were up on the ceiling that had been caused by prior humidity related to that HVAC system issue. That remediation has now all been completed. We did some additional cleaning in here. We have also installed some equipment within the ductwork to make sure that the problem is not only addressed but does not come back. And so with all that, we had an additional air test done on Friday morning that measured this air as very clean, much cleaner than before. And to this point, just as an estimate, worth about $20,000 to do that remediation in this room from start to finish. So beyond that, the social distancing issue for this room, again, does not allow for six full feet of social distancing when a time comes that all seven of you would return. So we have worked with a space consultant who has done some other work for us before to take a look at this room and what those options might be. And as you can imagine, given this room and the layout, there are rather limited options as to what can be done in terms of social distancing, but we do want to offer you a little bit of overview of what those might be. So would remind you, we're going to show you three options here. All three of those are intended to keep the seven of you on the dais together with social distancing. All seven of these do not fit eight people, so Town Attorney Gray would move to a different location in the room, not back up to the dais. All three keep the existing room alignment, but they do move this presentation podium over to the center of the room. I'll show you some diagrams around that. All of those move staff tables so that we would be directly in front of the dais, basically in place of that work session table. So that would have to go away, given the options that we have to replace the dais. So on your screen, you can see sort of an overhead view as if you're at the back of the room looking a little bit out. The red lines up on the dais are dividers, plexiglass dividers that would be added in between each of you, so they would actually extend out back from the current desk so that there would be physical separation between you, and that that would be there for your protection. As you can see, it reduces from the eight seats that we've had in the past down to seven seats to ensure there's that six feet of spacing. You can see where the podium is located in the center, in front of this arch steps down, and then two staff tables, one on either side. Those provide for social distancing and would allow for four staff members to be up at the front of the room, and that we could continue to do staff members in other areas of the room as we have in the past. That option is approximately $40,000. It involves some movement, some furniture, and those plexiglass dividers. So that would be the least expensive and simplest approach to providing for social distancing if you were to find that appropriate and acceptable. Option Two would be to remove the current dais, and so we would then replace it with a V-shaped option. That is a little bit advantageous because it doesn't impact the ramps on either side of the room. When you start to impact the ramps, it gets a little more expensive because of ADA requirements and needing a lift to bring up if the ramps are not there. So under this diagram, there would be six feet of spacing between all seats, so we would not have the plexiglass dividers. You would be separated sufficiently for social distancing, and you would have a similar setup at the front or at the base of these steps where you have the podium in the middle for presenting, and then staff again at two tables there. This one is slightly more expensive. It involves, again, the replacement of this dais, and that's approximately a $60,000 event to replace that. Option Three would be to replace the existing dais with essentially a longer C, so similar to this dais but with more of an arc to spread people out. Again, we would have seven seats up on the dais. They would all be spread apart more than six feet. We would have to basically cut into where these ramps are on either side, so that would result on a set of stairs on one side, and we would have to install a ramp on the other side so that there was ADA accessibility up to the dais. This one also cuts out a little bit of the front steps to bring that podium a little bit closer so that presenter is not quite as far back from you. With this option, more expensive, approximately $115,000 to create that new dais, to add the lift, to put in stairs. It's more of a modification to the existing layout than the other two options. Other considerations we would ask you to consider is to transition from what's currently in here as far as seating to a non-affixed seating that would give us a lot more flexibility in the use of the room. We would be able to upgrade that seating. The cost for that would be approximately $30,000. That would include 25 chairs and also new carpet throughout the building. We'd have to do that because taking these up would leave the damage behind from where everything is affixed to the ground. And again, 25 chairs to start, that would be about the maximum we would be able to place in here to maintain social distancing. Additional chairs could certainly be added back post-COVID when we reach a time that we would not be as concerned, perhaps about six feet of social distancing amongst participants in the meeting. We do have additional research to be done. As you know, there's a bit of a sound quality and an echo in the room. We do not have specific pricing on that. We could look into that if that were your direction. We could also look into lighting upgrades. Some of that has already been done by Giselle and her staff previously. There's still some additional work that could be done to try to improve that lighting. Again, if you would want to pursue that, we have not gone into detail to give you pricing estimates on what that would look like. So summary of both Giselle's presentation and what I've shared with you, again, we have about $180,000 if you were to want to pursue true touchless options across all of our facilities. Again, Giselle and her staff have done an unbelievable amount of work to put that together. So four phases, including two sort of Phase Ones. Phase One, the most pressing, would be those town park fixtures. Phase B would be some staff items. And then Phase Two, less important issue, still important but less of a priority. And then Phase Three and Phase Four down the line. We are recommending that you consider doing Phase 1A now. That would be the items in the park. Again, that is where we have the least control over the users and the most likelihood of potential exposure. We do not have those funds available in the FY 2021 budget. That would require a fund balance appropriation, were you to consider that. Again, we are not asking you for a decision tonight. We just want to share information with you. We realize this is a lot to process. So once you've had a chance to process all of this, we'd be happy to either take that feedback outside of a meeting and bring back to you, or just to hear back from you in a future meeting. A lot to consider. We also recommend considering Phases 1B, and then 2, 3, and 4, should you wish to go touchless as part of either the FY '22 or some future year as a budget request, because again, that's got a significant price tag with it as well. So that's the touchless aspect. Regardless, we are going to recommend and take action to put some additional temporary signage in parks and in other town facilities. Just again, continuing to emphasize personal accountability and responsibility, the three W's. I think the longer we go with this, the more difficult, or I guess I should say, the easier it becomes to forget that, not more difficult to remember, but easier to forget perhaps. We also want to make sure that we are demonstrating that the touchless options that we have available are being used, and the cost of these could be absorbed into our current budget, so we'll move forward with those. And then again, as Giselle has pointed out to me, regardless of any phasing, anything that we have to replace now due to mechanical issues or breakdown would be done with a touchless option wherever we can in the short term, regardless of long term. So for council chambers, again, we've identified three options that you could consider. Option One would be those plexiglass dividers. Option Two would be a V-shaped dais to replace the current dais. Option Three would be the new C-shaped dais. We have also identified that need for better accommodating public seating. And again, that removal of that permanent seating gives us a lot more flexibility, including the ability to still have, bring you off of the dais back to tables in the room for a work session, should you choose to do that. It just wouldn't be a permanent table located where it is, but we would have that ability if we have the flexibility of not having the permanent seats in the room. Our recommendation is that you consider Option Three. That would be the new C-shaped dais. It is the most expensive of the three options. We also encourage you to consider the removal of the fixed seating and those new chairs and carpeting. Total cost there would be $145,000. Our justification behind that recommendation is it is a commitment to the safety of our citizens, to you and your peers, and to our staff. It provides us the greatest, excuse me, flexibility in room setup and in use, including maintaining work sessions around a closer setting for you while still doing social distancing, short and long term. And in all candor, the renovation is really long overdue in this room on a couple of fronts regardless, so this may be the impetus to get that done. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Also would ask if there's anything that we haven't addressed that you would like us to be aware of. Now would be a great time for that. And then, do you need any additional information to make decisions, and what timeframe you might want any of this to occur in if you were willing to make action to move forward? And again, no decision tonight, but any questions or any guidance you have would be helpful, and we're happy to come back to discuss this again later.
Okay. Thank you. So maybe we can go through the touchless first and then do the talk about
Sure.
council chambers afterwards. We already have Councilmember Skargans Johnson would like to make a comment, and then I'll recognize Councilmember Fender.
Could we have the slide with your questions shared so that we can each see the questions and respond appropriately? Thank you so much. I do have a question about each of the scenarios. I would like to know the capacity of the room with each of the scenarios if it was a regular, non-COVID environment, like regular fire code? How that would affect capacity for audience?
Sure. So, did you want that answer? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilmember.
I'm sure, if you have it now, that's great. If you need to research it, I'm fine with that, too. It's just, I think that's important that we think both short term as well as long term.
Sure. So under the current restrictions and using social distancing, the capacity in the room with the chairs laid out with social distancing would be approximately 25. Now again, we're not at the point of wanting to invite that many people back in. We'll talk a little bit later about the governor's update today and what impact that may have, but we would have 25 chairs that would be able to be socially distanced. Under normal circumstances, this room is rated at a capacity of no more than 199 persons.
Okay, okay. And that's with the fixed seating that we have today, is the 199?
That's not necessarily with fixed seating. That's more of the capacity based on the room. The fixed seating only comes into play if we cross over, I believe the number's 200, and that's not why we picked 199. That's a fire inspector number.
Yeah.
That we are at 199 regardless of the type of seating.
Right. Okay. I do appreciate that. And I know, Mayor, you want to break this up into two, but I would rather speak once instead of twice. So I'm going to share with you my touchless input. I really love the Public Works approach in phasing, prioritization, and cost breakdown. That, I don't have any questions for Public Works. I have, you have my full support to consider moving forward. Other council members may have some concerns or questions, but I really like the strategy and approach, and it's a very thoughtful way of thinking about being a leader in this area. And then with the council arrangements, I do need more time to consider the various options, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rowe, please.
I have a couple of questions. You talked about adding some additional equipment for the HVAC in this room. Do you know what kind of equipment that was?
It was an ionization device that was installed directly, Giselle will correct me when I'm wrong here, installed directly into the system so that it is constantly doing that ionization through the ductwork. So that helped to clean it out and should help us moving forward.
All right, so it didn't include like a UV light?
I don't believe so. No, they were able to do it with the ionization, and then the cleaning in this room was primarily hand cleaning.
Okay. Is there any consideration, or is there any, has there been evaluation for any of the HVAC systems in our facilities that we would need to prevent the spread of COVID?
Sure. So again, I'll let Giselle comment, but I think the short version is that we've upgraded all of our filters so that they are at a level that are intended to do extra filtering. The HEPA filter is a higher quality, as recommended based on CDC guidance as far as filtering out anything that might be COVID-related. So we've done that already in all of our facilities. Again, the issue in here with the HVAC system unrelated to COVID, it was a humidity problem with the size of the unit that Giselle and her staff had corrected months ago. This just generated from that.
Right. Okay. And yes, I am very supportive of the work that you and your team have been doing transitioning to touchless fixtures in the parks. Because I go in and use the restrooms at different parks, and you know, I appreciate that. So I support, you know, further progress in that effort.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe, followed by Mayor Protam Johnson?
I appreciate the phased approach of Public Works. I don't really have any questions. I think my, I mean, and I have, I'll have to go back through the different options. A couple of questions, though. One is that the reason for these changes is it's just we're looking long-term at even like just societal expectations of social distancing, assuming that, you know, the vaccine comes out and still it's another year until, you know, people can go back to normal, but the normal may not be what it was. So are we, is that sort of the justification of why we're looking? Because the other option is, you know, continuing to run the way we're doing it with virtual, you know, for another year in hybrid models, but is that just too hard for the staff? And, you know, is that, I just was curious.
So the primary driver is absolutely the intent of bringing seven council members back to this venue with social distancing. You know, I do think there is a bigger sort of discussion there as far as where we ultimately are headed in terms of whether it be council attendance or, you know, work from home versus work in the office. What do workspaces look like? And we're, in all candor, a long ways away from any of those decisions, but we did feel that it was appropriate to examine the ability or what would need to be done to let you come back to this facility as a full body when that was possible with social distancing. That is the impetus for that.
Okay. The second question I would have is just something I've observed, and I was just curious. You know, I do commend you all putting thermal camera temperature checks, MAFC in some of the building, you know, obviously here is one. I would like, I've been seeing other facilities using risk-based thermal camera temperature, of the building, you know, obviously here is one. I would like, I've been seeing other facilities using wrist-based thermal camera temperature, which I think was pretty interesting because facial was good, but, you know, you just put your wrist in and then automatically takes temperature because then you're not exposing your face close someone didn't have a mask. So I just don't know if we're looking at options like that. And I was just curious as to the fire department, whether we could have actually moved to having some kind of a thermal machine-based camera check. Maybe they already do, but I think they're still doing it manually or I don't know.
So let me, I think two questions. One, as far as the facilities, we are using the face scanner. The advantage we see in that is that in addition to giving you your temperature, it also acknowledges if somebody takes their image without a mask or a face covering, it gives you a warning and this one gives you a red alert that basically says, "Don't come in because you're not wearing a face covering." It also automatically sends an email to select staff to say somebody's at the front door and either has a temperature or is not wearing a face covering trying to come into the building. So we see that to be advantageous. We have the one in the lobby here. We have the one at MAFC and we've just ordered an additional unit to go up at Cedar Fort Community Center and we'll have one at the senior center when it opens. So we have considered other options, but right now we believe that to be the most viable sort of get two birds with one stone option. As far as the fire department, are you speaking to the staff?
Yeah.
As far as checking for work?
Yeah. I mean, I just, I'm sorry if I don't know.
No, that, no, right now they are relying on a handheld temperature taker as they come to work or if they take it themselves at home. So that's been our policy since this started that when you come to work, you have to be able to acknowledge when you sign in that you have checked your own temperature and that you are symptom-free coming to work. So that can be either by your own device at home or we provided devices to all of our facilities so that if you don't have one at home or yours just doesn't work that day, you can take your temperature when you get to work. And again, we've really focused on personal accountability for all of our staff to make sure they're doing that on a daily basis.
Mayor Pretem Johnson, please.
So I'll talk first about the touchless and you have my full support on that too. So I thank Public Works for coming forward. I would say as, as things change over time and new technology or new options are out there, I think you should feel comfortable bringing that to us, kind of similar to what Councilmember Ralph just talked about. So I think this investment in these touchless options benefit our citizens' health today in this pandemic and in the future. And I pray we never have another pandemic like this, but we will certainly have viruses out there in the future too. So, and I will tell you, I am very conscious now of what I touch and it's going to take me probably the rest of my life to get over that. So we should be going touchless and not only an investment in our citizens' health here, but these are some options that will help with the maintenance of our facilities and the use of our facilities. So there's a bottom line here too. There's a savings. I guess that's what I'm getting at too. So yeah, 100% behind the touchless. And then as far as the council chambers, I too wanted to know about capacity, so you answered that. I didn't like the fact that we were going to lose a work session table, but you did answer that, Brandon, so I appreciate that. And so if, and I need to think about this a little bit to myself, if we were not in this pandemic, or maybe I'll put it this way, for years I have said, "This table needs to be repositioned." I think this is really difficult when the seven of us are here in healthy times. It's a very odd setup. You almost have to lean to kind of see each other. So it's easier now when there's only four of us here or sometimes five of us. But I always thought that this dais should be bowed differently and that's why I too, I can't believe I'm going to say this too, but I like the option three because that gives that real bowing of the table, although it's the most expensive option. So that's why I need to think about it a little bit.
Sure.
But I'm going to echo what Councilmember Ralph said too. I think we, if we make these investments, I think we need to think about using the facility if we're going to make these investments. And so that's another conversation to have too. So that's about all the feedback I have right now, if that helps.
It does. Thank you.
Councilmember Abadi followed by me and then Councilmember Garamella, please.
So I, Brandon, am 100% in support of all the initial touchless options in Giselle's presentation. I think that we should do that and I appreciate all the work that went into that. I really question whether this is the right time to spend even $30,000 redoing the council chamber. I mean, I feel like it would be a much cheaper option for three of us to just rotatingly participate remotely. And I feel like there's so much more that we could do with $30,000 right now that would be of way more help to, to our citizens and just, I don't know, that, I, if we really need to redo the council chamber, like if the roof is about to fall in or the chairs are falling apart, then fine. But I, I mean, I would way rather see us wait and make any changes, make those cosmetic changes to the council room when, when everyone in Morrisville is back on a little bit more of a, of a better economic footing. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd echo Councilmember Abadi's thoughts about the council chamber issue, so I'm flipping the order. I believe we can do five here safely at this time. And we did also toy with the idea of having two council members at that table if necessary or remote. So I'd say I'd like to wait on council chamber changes for now. I would like a follow-up question. How long would it take each of those other options to implement from when we said go to do it? If option TC takes three, three months, that's good to know. If it only takes a couple of weeks, that's a different answer. So if there might be future urgency, it'd be good to know how long it would take to implement those.
I can give an estimate and again, we are in the absolute, as with these cost estimates, these are, these are cloud level, have not dug in. This is to frame it. On the time, you're looking at more than likely 60 to 90 days. Again, and some of that depends on which option you choose and how extensive it is. It could go a little bit longer than that potentially. Some of that will include how quickly or what they find when they get into some of what's under this dais. We know there's a collection of things sort of under there that have been installed over the years. So I would say minimally 60 to 90 days.
And for some of that, we'd have to meet completely remotely or somewhere else probably?
Remotely or we could work, and we have not yet, but we could work on an alternate location. The difficulty with that is the technology and putting this out live.
Yep. Understood. So this, this area, although per Mayor Pretem's point, it's not ideal and that's been a problem. It's not really broken enough, I guess, in my opinion. And if we can continue with the safety, as you guys have been really good about making that happen, I'm comfortable continuing like this.
Yes, sir.
For the touchless, thank you very much for all the work, the inventory, deciding on the phasing. I'm all for giving you all the budget right now and you guys doing it as quickly as you can in the most cost-efficient way. I think that's an important step. So you have my full support to move forward as quickly as you can on any of this and I'd support a budget request of any amount to do those things because I think those are things that are good to do for the future no matter what, not even due to COVID. And that's it for that. For me, Councilmember Garamella, your thoughts, please, sir.
I am perfectly okay in a phased-mice approach for the touchless. And I kind of echo pretty much the same sentiments with what Ann says. Do we really need this now? How much, you know, because the governor's new order is like they're restricting to 10 and next two, three months are going to be more critical. You know, the cases are only going up and the rules will get more stricter and stricter. So we can wait. Nothing is, even if the idea is to get, you know, all seven to the council chamber, that's certainly not going to happen in the next two, three months. I'm not sure not coming there to the chambers. And I'm sure Ricky has similar things. So why don't we wait for a couple of more months? And my whole idea is not about investing the money, but it will be a short-term, what if everything, the normalcy comes back, you know, then we lose the spaces and everything, you know? And, or can we, is it a temporary fix or is it something that we can go back to what we presently have in the council chambers? That's, those are the kind of questions I would like more information.
Sure.
So you've heard from all seven of us. From what I heard, you have full support to move forward with Phase 1A. So if council is comfortable with you guys bringing back a budget request at our next meeting, does that sound reasonable for fund balance?
Yeah, we'll bring a BOA on the 24th if that's, that's what I heard anyway.
Okay. Any comments from the remote participants on that? Because I got head nods up here.
I would put that on consent agenda too.
We would be happy to do that.
Look at the smile.
We'd be happy to.
Okay. So do you need any other direction from us on either of those?
No, if I may, I think what I heard then is we'll bring you a BOA on the 24th that would address Phase 1A. You are open to hearing more about Phases 1B, 2, 3, and 4 as part of budget discussions. If not, perhaps before, but right now we'll plan on that as a part of a budget discussion and that you would like time to continue to consider the options we've provided about council chambers, understanding that that's a fairly significant change that we don't necessarily have to implement now. And we can circle back with you once we begin to hear more about the path of the epidemic and what future meetings and things might look like if that sounds okay.
Could you bring up the 1A, 1B slide just to make sure that we're all good on just
Sorry. I have the mouse in my left hand and I'm not left-handed.
Okay. So those two together are the seven months. I'd support doing 1A and 1B as part of the initial thing rather than parsing them out since those are both town buildings. Would other council members be okay with moving forward with everything, at least of that first phase? I'm seeing head nods. Seeing no comments from the remote. Recognize Councilmember Abadi, please.
Me? No, I just, I just said I would be in favor of both phases also. The second one seems pretty minor.
Okay. Thank you. And council, no?
No, it was just a comment about the sound.
Okay.
She said both phases, sorry. That was an extra add.
And was that from Scroggins-Johnson?
Scroggins-Johnson.
Okay. So it sounds like you have direction to do both of those first two phases, please.
Okay. We'll bring you back something the 24th for Phase 1A and Phase 1B and then we'll discuss 2, 3, and 4 with you as part of budget discussions.
Or if you feel like things are moving quickly enough that you can include those in efficient manner, we'd love to hear that.
Okay.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
Lots of hard work there. Safety of our citizens and our staff are of primary importance, so we really appreciate you bringing that forward. Our final presentation is an FY 2020 Fund Balance Update. Jeannie Hooks, Director of Business Management, and Nancy Emsley, Finance Director, will present.
We're glad to be here tonight to share some additional information on fund balance after your CAFR presentation. Nancy and I'll do a little bit of a tag team. What we're going to do is just really focus on some high-level information that just supports the details that are in the analysis report. And I just want to remind you guys, during the budget season, we're going to talk a lot more about fund balance. So just hold your questions till the end. We'll likely, in the pursuit of time, management tonight maybe collect those questions and work them through our budget development process and addressing and answering them in different ways. So I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Emsley, our Finance Director. Thank you.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all again and see you in person. Happy to be here this evening to talk to you a little bit about fund balance. Let's see here. Trying to get this, went too far. Oh, here we go. All righty. Okay. So just going to give you, as Jeannie said, we're going to, this is going to be a real high-level presentation. In your packets, you've got the actual fund balance report. This has a lot more detail as far as information and so I'm not going to go through all of that because it's a lot. But in the slides, we tried to give you basically a bird's eye view of what's happening with fund balance. Fund balance is basically comprised of several different things that make up our fund balance. It's restricted monies, it's committed monies, it's assigned monies and so on. And each one of those has a different percentage as far as the breakdown of fund balance is concerned. For this illustration, the fund balance as of 6/30 was 30.8 million. That is actually for the fund, for general fund, which is, which is what I would call the general fund and all the sub-funds such as the MSD fund, the LEOSA, the OPEB, and the cash reserves. So they're all rolled up into that 30.8 million that you see. And it did decrease a little bit from last year. It was a $3.8 million decrease from fiscal year 19. And that's because we've had more spending, which is part of the reason why fund balance did decrease. But, but we still have a healthy fund balance. And one of the things that we like to look at is the unassigned fund balance because that basically is where we can make, where you as, as our leaders can make those decisions of how we will spend, spend that unassigned fund balance. And most of the time that's used for things that are for cash flow purposes such as the Morrisville Carpenter Roads, a perfect example of how we would use the unassigned fund balance to help fund that project because that is a reimbursing grant. And so we have to spend the money in order to get it back, but we need to have the money to spend. And so, so the unassigned fund balance is a policy that council has had in place for many years. The LGC says a minimum of 8% of our unassigned fund balance should be available. And that basically for us is about a 1%, 1 month of our operational average. We have been very good in that our fund balance has been around 30, 30 to, we actually ended up at 38% this year compared to 40%. So we went down a little bit. But, but this is again, for us to, to be able to use that when we need to have the, those reserves available. Our credit agencies look at our unassigned fund balance. That's one of the things that when we are going out to our, for bond referendums and to actually issue bonds, credit rating agencies are looking at our unassigned fund balance and just seeing how healthy that's been, how we've been spending it. We really want to use it for those one-time expenditures and not for operational purposes. So here's some highlights about our unassigned fund balance for, as of our fiscal year ending June 30. We actually do a comparison of that percentage of general fund expenditures. As I mentioned, it is a little bit lower this year. It's 36, almost 37% compared to 40% last year. But as I mentioned, we had a lot more expenditures. Our expenditures actually grew by 20%. But even with that being said, our unassigned, the unassigned fund balance actually went up almost a little over a million dollars from, compared to fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. So we still, even though we spent more money with our general fund expenditures, we actually still did increase our, our unassigned fund balance, which is what we want to see happening from, from year to year. There are factors that can influence the unassigned fund balance. Certainly whether revenues exceed expenditures is part of that. If we have transfers in and out, that affects that. Our outstanding purchase orders that we have at the end of the year will also affect that unassigned fund balance. And also if we've got any other restricted sources. So these are all things that we look at when we're, when we're comparing our unassigned fund balance.
Can I just jump in just a little bit on the slide?
Yes, let me go back.
When Nancy talks about outstanding purchase orders at year-end, just a reminder, the world doesn't work perfectly in a fiscal year. Our operational expenses, our initiatives that we budget for, the small projects that are in there, sometimes they're seasonally influenced, meaning that we can't do road projects until the spring. Well, that just means that we don't encumber that money until later in the fiscal year and it could be that progress isn't enough on that purchase order to, to close it out. So we have what's called outstanding or work in progress and that PO just gets rolled over and the encumbrance gets... And that PO just gets rolled over and the encumeralt gets rolled over from one fiscal year to the next. And, and that's a portion of the money that you'll see really identified as what are those outstanding factors? Those things that we did not, uh, do? That, that's a, that's an influence to that. So if you look on page 6 of the analysis, which we're not gonna do that here, but if you have time when you study it, you'll see some of those components like PO rollover and how that impacts and influence how we perform against a budget. And another thing that, that can impact and influence the calculation of fund balance at, at fiscal year-end is really you deciding your, your changes and commitment of, of capital reserve monies. So when you commit capital reserve monies to, to CIP, capital reserve, you're setting it aside and it becomes a committed piece of fund balance. But when you transfer it out to a capital project, it moves it out and it's no longer a part of that calculation. It's committed to a source, uh, a tangible thing that you're trying to produce. So there's just some of the nuances of fund balance calculations that's sort of comprehensive and complex, uh, but something we enjoy actually doing.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Jeanne. So, uh, as I was mentioning, this is just looking at unassigned fund balance, um, as a, for the general fund. Uh, as I mentioned, it did increase of over, by over a million dollars. We still spent our, um, within our, our 36, um, we still spent within our policy, we say 25 to 45%. Uh, it's what we want to see for the general fund expenditures. So we're well within, we're well within that policy. Oh, sorry, I went the wrong way. Beg your pardon. Alright, here we go. Uh, other fund ballots, highlights, um, just, this is just showing you the Parkland Payment and Lou. Again, real high level, what the balance was as of last year, um, and what the, uh, the balance was as of, uh, June 30th of this year. We did have revenue collected, um, and also, but we had a lot of, of, um, fund ballots that was appropriated on this, on that, uh, restricted source.
Nancy, I'll jump in just a few seconds on this one. So just a reminder on Parkland Payment Lou, this is a limited source. Uh, you know, as we approach build-out, the amount of money we collect is actually growing less and less or will be impacted over the years and, and how we can use it. And another comment just to note, Nancy, is, is really, uh, what our collections have been based on, uh, in recent years has really been on multi-family. So, so that's just some highlight to, to put out there.
Thanks, Nancy. Mm-hmm. And as, uh, also, um, here, we're looking at street infrastructure. That's another thing that, um, the Powell bill is a perfect example of what, uh, we collect that goes into that restricted fund balance for, for street improvements. Um, and, um, we also will collect a payment, um, in lieu for street infrastructure from our developers as well. Also just wanted to touch a little bit on capital reserves. Um, as you can see, there, we, we've, we've spent our fire apparatus funds. Um, as, we had a fire truck that we purchased and so that's why you see a significant decrease, uh, in the fire apparatus fund reserve. We didn't, as you know, for fiscal year budget 21, we did not fund anything for the fire apparatus. The only thing that was actually funded for 21 is the transportation, uh, roadway and transportation. Um, but we still have a balance in our CIP. And then, as I said, now, as of Jan, excuse me, as of July 1, we have a balance, uh, in, of 1.4 million, almost 1.5 in the roadway and transportation project, uh, excuse me, capital reserve. And then, also just wanted to share with you what some of the potential, um, uses are for that unassigned fund balance. As I mentioned before, we probably will need to use that to cash flow our Morris, Morrisville Carpenter, uh, road project. We did certainly have used it for cash flowing in the Crimman, um, and also for, um, for the Crabtree Hasher. But we've also wanted to let you, um, remind you about some of the future projects that we have that are, that are underway. But the, the, I think the thing I want to stress is that fund balance, when we use it, it's really for one-time needs. It's not something we want to use for operational needs. And that's why it's good that we have that healthy fund balance, because we, we have the money, um, to, uh, take care of our expenditures. Ad valorem taxes don't really start coming in until about now. Um, so we really have to fund, use our unassigned fund balance to help flow, um, those, those, uh, operational expenses. But that's not the, um, the intent when we appropriate the fund balance. Typically, it's for, uh, a one-time usage. So this is again, a very high-level, uh, um, information for you. As Jeanne mentioned, there'll be a lot more discussions as we go, we get into the budget process and, and the budget season as far as how we might be using some of our, uh, uh, fund balance for future projects. Um, anything else you would like to add?
Same questions with council members?
I'd, I can begin. I, now that we have an estimate for Morrisville Carpenter Road, I'd be interested to, um, have that dollar figure put into this calculation. When you subtract 12 million minus that, where does that leave us as compared to the 8%, 25%? If you have any kind of timeline of how that money will be put out? Cause I know we have to commit all of it, but how much do we actually have to give out before we get reimbursed? So if you guys can predict your cash flow and determine whether or not, uh, that's gonna bring us close to any kind of problem, that'd be helpful to know.
And Mayor, if I could interrupt?
Yes, please.
We are, as a part of this continued discussion, we're bringing you some additional project updates to sort of reflect what we estimate cost might be, what we have reserved, what you might need to consider in the future. That's one of many, and that's one of the presentations you're gonna get at one of the upcoming work sessions to layer all of that information on, so you have a full picture, not just of any one project.
Okay. I just know that that was, uh, a determinant of our decision-making up to this point, knowing that, uh, that was a big chunk of change and it influences our decisions going forward on any other CIP project. So if you can help us understand where we're at, um, so that we can take advantage of emergent opportunities and needs as they arise. Cause luck is when preparation meets opportunity, so whatever we can do to be prepared for, uh, anything like that happens. Okay. I'll recognize Councilmember Rao.
I just, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's really good to know that we have a healthy fund balance. And, you know, I think as long as we know that we have that to rely on, even, you know, certainty we have in a couple of months. But it looks like Morseville's financially doing pretty well, you know, given everything that's been going on. My question would be, it'd be nice to get, is there anywhere we could, you, you had the nice payment of Lou breakdown and, um, there, I would be curious as to, there were a place we could go to find out how much of that over the last few years has come from multi-family? That would be, I mean, and I don't want you to, I mean, if there's a place you can direct that I could go, I just would be curious. And I think, you know, that would be an interesting data set to publish eventually on maybe our open data portal so that people could start extrapolating and doing some forecasting on how much, you know, revenue does come in over the years. So just, that's not really an ask, I just wanted to know where we can get that information.
Certainly, we, we have that information and we can pull that together at a later point and, and share it.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, looking for anyone else who has any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for all your hard work. The CAFR, the fund balance, lots of good information coming towards us to help us make decisions moving forward.
Yes, and I just wanna say thanks to Nancy and her team. They did an outstanding job this year, uh, bringing CAFR back in-house and doing much of these analysis here.
Thank you.
Excellent. We are, uh, doing very well on the over-under on our predicted time, so we're gonna keep on going. We'll still look, take a break, but we'll be sure eight. At this time, we're at, uh, number 10, public comment. Um, Town Clerk Smith will present any public comments received after we see if we have anyone who wants to speak in person.
Yes, sir, there were no, um, email public comments received, but we do have one individual signed up to give in-person comments.
Okay. We appreciate everyone's patience as we're making sure that the safety of our visitor is primary. Hi, welcome. Uh, your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thanks, I need a pedestal if I can't touch this thing.
Can we have staff go ahead and move that for her before we start the clock? Thank you.
Meanwhile, my name is Dr. Jean Spooner. 2401 Trinity Farms Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, today I'd like to talk about protection in, of your recreational corridors and invite you to a site visit on Saturday, November 21 at 9:00 AM that the Umpstead Coalition would like to host for you. The Airport Authority is pursuing some disruptive and incompatible land uses, um, with respect to some of the adjacent land uses, uh, which is recreation, business, residential, and of course, our beloved William B. Umpstead State Park, which existed way before the Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority. It was there first. Uh, the town of Morrisville's Crabtree-Hatcher Creek Greenway, which we've been working diligently on, now connects the town of Morrisville to Lake Crabtree County Park and to William B. Umpstead State Park. This vital connection to our state park for your Morrisville citizens is via the Old Reedy Creek Road Greenway Corridor. This vital Greenway Corridor at Umpstead State Park would be severely degraded if the airport proceeds with its incompatible land use proposals of a 400-foot-deep rock quarry with logging, trucks, construction, noise, dust, et cetera. They're also proposing still to destroy 147 acres of bike-ped forested trails at Lake Crabtree County Park, convert to an office park. They're still have on their budget over 12 miles of chain-link barbed-wire topped fence along the Old Reedy Creek Corridor and the boundary of William B. Umpstead State Park. And they're looking to put tremendous amount of new pavement along the borders of Umpstead State Park. And, and all of this, I'd like to share you, with you the site we're actually talking about. I'll send you some details, but if you could hold, if you're available, I'd love to ha- host, host you for a visit. And it can be either, uh, you can just be there at your cars and optionally, we'll, I'll offer you a short hikes. And show you this beautiful corridor that, um, that your citizens are using, one of the most vital recreational corridors here. And hopefully you can work with us so that RDU can themselves perform compatible land use on lands that is managed by the RDU Airport. Also, I want you to be aware that the, there's an upcoming FAA initiative for the environmental impact statement for the runway, parking lots, terminals that RDU is proposing. And that's proceeding, and then we'll have lots of opportunity there to hopefully, um, assist RDU in protecting its adjacent land uses to be more compatible. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming in.
And I hope to see you, hope you can join me.
We appreciate it, and you're our first public commenter, uh, for public address in many months. So we really appreciate you coming out and being part of it.
Well, thank you.
Have a nice day. Town Clerk Smith, you indicated there weren't any other comments received via our portal?
No, sir, there were not.
Okay. We will now move on to number 11. There is one public hearing item on tonight's agenda, consideration of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to a comprehensive update of the sign regulations. Council was briefed on this item at the October 27th meeting and will be asked to take action on November 24th. Michelle Stiegel, Planning Director, will facilitate the public hearing.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I really don't have a lot to add, um, to what you just indicated. Um, public hearing on the sign code update, um, is this evening. Um, we did do, um, one more kind of, um, outreach effort, um, prior to this public hearing in order to make, uh, stakeholders aware that the hearing was going to be this evening. So for your information, we have been regularly putting information in next week in Morrisville, and we've done a lot of direct email outreach and did one more effort, um, using our developer lift serve, property managers, um, those that we previously interviewed as part of the project, and anyone that had submitted a sign permit application since January this year. Um, but we have received, um, no public comments, uh, written, um, on this item. Based on the discussion and some of the questions at your last meeting, we did add one additional attachment to the packet, which was some imagery of just sample electronic message boards. And as a reminder, our project consultant, Greg Jones with Ansel Glink, um, is present with us remotely this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll take care of that, and then if we have any questions for staff. Public hearing is open. Town Clerk Smith, do we have anyone in the lobby who wishes to speak in person?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Did we receive any public hearing comments that would be appropriate at this time?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow, November 11th, as per remote, um, meeting protocol.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion from Mayor Portem, and I have a second from Councilmember Rao. Town Clerk Smith, if you would please do the roll call vote to close the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, November 11th passes unanimously.
Okay. That will be closed. Do any council members have any comments or questions for staff? We're looking to take action on this, uh, at our next meeting, November 24th. Seeing none, I would like, uh, Councilmember Fender.
I'd like a question, uh, ask one question, um, concerning the, the sign update. Um, I'm having a lot of heartburn about making the change to allowing more electronic signs. So why, I mean, from my point of view, I'm thinking if it's not broken, don't try to fix it. So I think our previous, um, our previous ordinance was just fine in this regard. So why did we need to change?
Um, and I do know our, I could respond, but I'll give our, our consultant, um, Mr. Jones, an opportunity to do that first.
Alright.
Absolutely, uh, great question, Councilmember, thank you, and thanks, Michelle. Uh, good to see, uh, the council again tonight. Uh, the, the goal, uh, with the, uh, sign code update was to, uh, provide a, a legal and defensible framework to enforce sign regulations. Your current, uh, sign code only allows electronic signs at gas stations, and it only allows them to display specific messages, uh, temperature, time, and gas price, I believe, the three things on there. That's a, a type of regulation that's content-based. Uh, and if challenged, the town would likely have a difficult time defending that, uh, because of, uh, basically an ordinance that says you can only have this type of sign for this business and it has to say this. Uh, so that's not a great spot to be in, uh, if, if you are challenged and, and need to defend it or, or generally want to enforce your ordinance. So what the new code does is it, it pivots away from a, a legally suspect approach and, uh, instead allows the village to regulate, uh, electronic signs just based on zoning district, essentially. And we've identified, uh, you know, a discrete number of districts where electronic signs are allowed, and that analysis was driven by where frankly, the gas stations are currently located. Uh, so this is not a sea change, uh, this is not a, a large policy shift of, now we're opening the floodgates to allow a lot of electronic signage in. Instead, it's reframing your regulations in a way that's defensible, uh, to give you the best chance to, to win in court if, if in fact you do face a challenge.
I have a quick follow-up. Could we disallow all signs?
I have a second follow-up.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were done, go ahead.
Is there a way, I mean, can we limit the zoning districts? Like take off the regional activities center zoning district? And allow the commercial and industrial?
Uh, you have flexibility in identifying what zoning districts allow electronic signs or comedy, electronic signs. Uh, but again, I think staff's approach and, uh, throughout this process was to identify where they are now and in what zoning districts they're located in now, uh, and allow those to continue, uh, of a situation where you have a lot of non-conforming signs out there, uh, which can- a situation where you have a lot of non-conforming signs out there, which can create some enforcement issues moving forward.
Isn't the area along McCrimmon Extension going to be Regional Activities Center, or is it Business Activities Center?
The land use plan is calling for Business Activities Center. Business Activities Center is what the land use plan is calling for.
All right.
So, I, when this was presented, I heard, I thought I heard saying we might as well expand it a little bit since we're doing the code. So, I'm not in favor of expanding it at all. If anything, I'd restrict it more. If a gas station wants to do a sign, they can do it. It doesn't need to be electronic. It'd be a lit sign, like backlit. I'm not interested in allowing electronic signs in town. There's very few of them now, I think, that use electronics, per se. I can think of Airport Boulevard in 54 is the only one that comes to mind right away. So, I'd be very interested in having an option to even make that go away, because I think that, we say that it's not going to open the floodgates, but we don't know until it happens, and then it's too late. So, I'd like to be able to legally defend a really nice aesthetic that we have now rather than have to try to backpedal later. So, we don't have to vote for a couple of weeks, but I would like that to be an option when we come to make motions.
And that's obviously, in your purview, the kind of electronic message board that the electronic gas price numbers have pretty much become industry standard. That's not to say that you can't go to a manually changing number. That was common years ago, but the industry standard is now the electronic for the pricing, at least.
Okay. And I'm now remembering there's one at Park Place, so I'd like to try to have us thread the needle a little bit more and still be defensible, if possible. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Yes. I think it's important to consider that we want to keep the gas stations with the ability to change their prices as is required with their business model. I mean, they change them throughout the day, and electronics are industry standard. So, we need to be careful not to inappropriately make them change their business model. Somehow, whether you, you know, if you don't like the electronic signs, think about a way of, you know, narrowing the scope. But I want you also to think about the fact that electronic signs are inexpensive to change content, and the town could consider electronic signs as well. Would an electronic sign be at Church Street Park announcing activities and events? Would we want to consider doing that? We have these very local-based signs that we had for events, you know, throughout the years, but we might want to consider an electronic sign somewhere in the future. So, before we say absolutely no electronic signs anywhere in the town or whatever, think about the government uses that could be advantageous as well. That's all. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Any other council members want to make comments or have any questions or any other information in advance of two weeks from now? Mayor Portem Johnson?
So, of the signs that you, the samples that you gave us, Michelle, are those all possible under this new revision in the code?
They are, and I'll let Attorney Jones weigh in as well, but if you wanted to kind of rein it in a little bit more, I think you could limit the number of colors or something to that regard that could be displayed on a sign. Attorney Jones, did you have anything you might want to add?
Yeah, that's correct. The signs that Michelle provided are consistent with what the code allows currently, but there's room for modification as well, and certainly, there seems to be, based on tonight's discussion, at least some support for, you know, allowing gas station price changes and things like that. One way some communities accommodate that is to reduce the size of the allowable electronic display. Currently, the draft code says that electronic signs can make up no more than 50% of the sign area on a ground-mounted sign. If that were reduced, you know, there's ways to kind of encourage the appropriate use of these signs by only allowing smaller signs that can typically, traditionally anyway, display gas prices. So, that's one way to do it. But there are, yeah, the town has options if there are specific design features related to the sign they'd like to accommodate that don't infringe on First Amendment principles that we're trying to avoid here.
Okay. So, you read my mind, because that's where I was headed. I think there are some of these signs that you showed us in this example that, quite frankly, are not really different from what we see out there now, except that they have a portion that's this electronic. But there are some examples here that have a large, huge electronic screen, which I could see as being, quite frankly, pretty darn distracting, depending on where it is. So, I like the idea that maybe we can limit the size of the electronic piece, and maybe that gets us to a better place.
Yeah, that's absolutely something we can look into.
And I'd love a second bite at that apple. Yeah, I don't want to mess with gas station's current business model, so if we restrict it to one color and the size, that's pretty much all it can be used for in a meaningful way. So, I'd be comfortable with that. And per Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, if in the future we feel like there's an opportunity for us and other businesses to benefit from something like this, we could always expand later. So, that would be something I'd be interested in. Keeping it tight for now, we're making lots of changes to different things. We have a whole new area of town that's going to be expanded and built. I'd like to keep that controlled for now, and then we'll see how we come later, was my personal hope. So, thank you very much for this presentation. Thank you, Mr. Glink, again, for coming by and joining us. We'll see you again in two weeks.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's 7:38. We've got to do a couple of these little ones. We're going to keep going, and then we'll take a break. We'll do one or two of these action items. We have a number of them, and then we'll take our break. There are, item 12, action items. There are five action items on tonight's agenda. A proposed amendment of the zoning map for 151 Key Bridge Drive, a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for 1001 Airport Boulevard, a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive, a resolution appointing a advisory board and committee members, and a resolution authorizing issuance of Town Center Core Demonstration Project Request for Proposal, RFP. Emily Langston, Planner 2, will facilitate our first item. Ms. Langston?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any updates on this item today. We were briefed on it a couple of weeks ago, or about a month ago, and had a public hearing a couple of weeks ago. There were no public comments received on it. So, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. Otherwise, no updates for me.
Okay. Looking around, waiting for any remote comments or questions. Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion on Resolution 2020-251-0?
Do you have to read the whole thing out? Do you want me to read the whole thing, or can we just? I'm prepared. Okay. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-251-0 pertaining to the adoption of a Plan Consistency Review Statement for a Proposed Zoning Map Amendment for 151 Key Bridge Drive located north of Key Bridge Drive, east of the intersection of Key Bridge Drive and Chapel Hill Road, and west of the intersection of Key Bridge Drive and Calvesta Drive to Park Greenway Open Space, Res 000239-2020.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, if you would do a roll call vote on this resolution, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 2020-251-0 approving a zoning map amendment for 151 Key Bridge Drive located north of Key Bridge Drive, east of the intersection of Key Bridge Drive and Chapel Hill Road, and west of the intersection of Key Bridge Drive and Calvesta Drive to Park Greenway Open Space, Res 000239-2020.
I have a motion, and I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, if you could do the honors, please.
Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We'll knock out another one. Michelle Stiegel, Planning Director, will facilitate our next two items.
You were briefed on this item back at your October 13 meeting with a public hearing on October 27. As a reminder, this is the proposed rezoning for 1001 Airport Boulevard to accommodate office life science use. This request would not allow any residential development on the property, and we received no public comments since the last meeting within that 24-hour period. You do have three action items on this one. A resolution approving a land use plan amendment, the resolution for the consistency statement, and an ordinance acting on the rezoning.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions or comments to the Planning Director on this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-258-0A of the Morrisville Town Council approving an amendment of the land use plan for 1001 Airport Boulevard property located along the north side of Airport Boulevard and east of the intersection of Slater Road and Copley Parkway to Business Activities Center, CPA-406-2020.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, please.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-258-0B of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a Plan Consistency Review Statement for a Proposed Zoning Map Amendment for 1001 Airport Boulevard property located along the north side of Airport Boulevard and east of the intersection of Slater and Copley Parkway to the Conditional Business Activities Center District, Res 336-2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, please.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati? Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
And make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2020-258-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for 1001 Airport Boulevard property located along the north side of Airport Boulevard and east of the intersection of Slater Road and Copley Parkway to the Conditional Business Activities Center zoning district, Res 336-2020.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, please.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Planning Director Stiegel will do item 12C as well, please.
This next item is similar to last with the land use plan amendment and proposed rezoning, this time for the property at 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive. That's the former Sam's Club site, looking to accommodate potential life science use on that property. A number of conditions on that proposed rezoning, which would rezon to the property to Conditional Industrial Management Zone. Item was briefed on October 13 with the public hearing at your last meeting on October 27, and again, we received no comments within that 24-hour period after the public hearing.
Okay. And no updates, so?
No.
Any council members have any questions or comments on this item before we entertain a motion?
I have a comment.
Yes. Councilmember Fender, please.
I just have a comment. I'm still having a concern about allowing medium manufacturing in this zone. You know, according to the definition, this manufacturing may produce noise, odor, smoke, heat, glare, and vibration resulting from manufacturing activities that is perceptible to adjacent land users, but not offensive or obnoxious. I think that is subjective, and I don't support the use of medium manufacturing for this location.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-254-0A approving a land use plan map amendment for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive located northeast of the intersection of Shiloh Glen Drive and El Paso Way to the Industrial Use Designation, CPA-397-2020.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith?
Councilmember Fender?
No.
Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes.
And I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-254-0B pertaining to the adoption of a Plan Consistency Review Statement for a Proposed Zoning Map Amendment for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive located northeast of the intersection of Shiloh Glen Drive and El Paso Way, Res 214-2020.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Is that Councilmember Robati? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Town Clerk Smith, please.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson? Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
No.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2020-254-0 approving a zoning map amendment for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive located northeast of the intersection of Shiloh Glen Drive and El Paso Way to the Conditional Industrial Management zoning district, Res 214-2020.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Rao. Town Clerk Smith, please.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
No.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay, at this time, it's 7:51. I'd like to take a 10-minute break, so let's please reconvene at 8:02. Thank you. He is in Delta. Eric Smith, our town clerk, will facilitate our next item. Mr. Smith?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You were previously briefed on this item at the October 27 meeting. On the evening of October 28, council did receive an application appointment packet and returned completed ballots to the town clerk via email on November 5. The council ballots were tallied and compiled with the following results. Do note that all the appointments are for two-year cycles beginning on December 1, 2020, through November 30, 2022. For the Morseville Public Education Advisory Committee, council selected Elizabeth Benjamin. For the Morseville Performance Measures Advisory Committee, council selected Kristen Green. For the Morseville Senior Advisory Committee, council selected Monica Tony. And for the Morseville Environment and Stormwater Committee, council selected Caitlin Tarly. Council is asked to approve the resolution authorizing these appointments tonight, and I'm free to answer any questions that council may have.
Does anyone... Okay, Councilmember Rao?
We had a couple of qualified candidates that came in late, you know, one applied for education and another one applied for environmental. What do we tell these folks? Are they going to put them in the queue? Just if you could refresh my memory so that they have a chance to serve?
We do let those candidates know that their applications are going to be kept on file for a year following the cycle that they applied in. So a year from whatever date that they applied, their applications will be kept on file. And during future appointment cycles, we do reach out to those candidates to inform them that, hey, we're doing more recruitment. Or do you still want to be considered for appointment? And we get that feedback from them just so we can interact with them over that year. The next appointment cycle should be the spring appointment cycle. I believe we may discuss a special appointment cycle regarding the steering committee that Rick Ralph is going to discuss a little bit later. But the next scheduled appointment cycle is going to be the upcoming spring cycle, probably in March.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Protem Johnson?
So when you reach out to these folks, do you give them the opportunity to change their preference too? Because that might change.
The preference for board appointments, I haven't specifically told them they could change their board preferences, like the first or second choice, but we can start doing that also.
Okay. Would they have to reach out to you then and do that previously?
To reach out to me, the best method to do it would probably be to just submit a new application because there are some board and committee-specific questions that are on each application. So if they change the choice, they may need to tweak their application a little bit to better fit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The process has become smoother every time, so thank you very much for doing that. I'd entertain a motion, seeing no other questions or comments for 2020-312-0.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Johnson, a second from Councilmember Rao. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you to everyone who applied. We really appreciate your involvement. Brandon Zudema will present our next action item.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So I have Eric Thomas, senior project manager from DFI, who is also on the call with us tonight. As you know, we spoke to you in September to bring you back up to speed and give you some updated information in regards to the Town Center Solicitation of Development Partners, the RFP. And then on October 27, we came back to you and gave you an overview of what that RFP would look like with the highlights, and we took your feedback. And since that time, Eric has worked back through that draft document to make some changes. So you received in your agenda packet the final draft RFP. You also received a copy of that final draft RFP with changes from the prior version in October highlighted. Those changes reflect the feedback that we heard from you on October 27. And I'm going to turn it over to Eric to just do a very high-level overview of what some of those changes are and to walk you through up-to-consideration of authorization to move forward with an RFP. Eric?
Yes, hi. Hi, all. Good evening. I think, let me see, I'm trying to see if I have control over the... Okay, looks like I got control. Yeah, so I'm going to walk through just a few of those modifications that we incorporated into the solicitation document. And then, let me see, I'm not... Okay, I am able to move it here. And then, at the end, sort of leave it for an opportunity to endorse the document. So again, I'm going to go over tonight's meeting goals. As Brandon mentioned, this will be a brief presentation of materials. Talk about a little bit, refresh about the solicitation process and updates to the document. And then solicitation endorsement, and then if endorsed, what those next steps look like for DFI as we go back, as we go out to essentially interact with the development community and discuss this opportunity with the development community at large. As I mentioned already, meeting goals would be, the outcome would be the council endorsement of the demonstration project solicitation document, as you all have in your package. Again, what's included within this solicitation for development partners? It's a whole slew of information. The executive summary of development opportunity ranging to market analysis, site overview. It really is a packet of information that's directed towards the development community to, one, inform them of the opportunity that exists, talk about the public participation strategies for the document, and ensure that how they respond provides enough information so that we can clearly and objectively evaluate all the responses that we would get in. So that includes timelines, documents, what's required within the solicitation document, and the proposals from those developers. And then essentially make sure those criteria are clear so that it's easy for town staff and DFI to evaluate the responses. And so here are just a few kind of key points that town staff and DFI, what we took from the last meeting that essentially incorporated into or refined the solicitation document to include. One was clarifying the developer responsible for all relevant permits and fees associated with the development project. I know there was some question regarding that. We wanted to make sure that developers knew that they were responsible for all those pertinent fees and permits associated with the project itself. We wanted to make sure that the development community understood all the investments the town has made up to this date in terms of road infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, sidewalks, a lot of other infrastructure that has essentially been completed to date to support the Town Center Core project. So not essentially just saying, all right, town will go in parallel with you moving forward, but really kind of highlighting to the development community that the town has been priming and pumping, priming the pump for this project for many years in the past to essentially get it ready for where we are today, as well as understanding the potential investments needed to move the project forward. We wanted to provide language to the Morseville Draft Land Use Plan, specifically the Town Center Core Sub Area Plan. There's a lot of great language in that that helps understand and dictate the design and the density and sort of the look, feel, vision goals that you all have for the Town Center Core. So providing a link to that document within the solicitation will essentially streamline the process for the development community as they put together responses or at least gain more information about the Town Center Core. There were several questions last time about timelines and what would be going on with the development community after, say, coming up with a development agreement. So I'll touch on the timeline a little later on in the materials, but we did clarify the timeline within the solicitation document to essentially get it so that it's easier to read, easier to understand, and essentially lays out what potentially is an estimated timeline for selection all the way through beginning construction for the development partner. Now, that's an estimated projected timeline. Things may move faster, things may move slower, but let's hope they don't move slower. But just wanted to say that that's sort of a best estimate for what the timing would look like in order to get a developer selected and then construction began on the project. We wanted to also incorporate, oh, sorry, I think I just jumped backwards. Also wanted to incorporate a statement on the trees on Block 1. Is there a way for the developer to think creatively about buffering? And also potentially incorporating publicly accessible outdoor spaces within that development site? So are there courtyards that could be publicly accessible? And what are the landscape plans within those courtyards? And then lastly, an item that was incorporated into the solicitation document was reference to the land acquisition policy that you all have just recently developed. So kind of explaining that, yes, this is phase one of a multiple-phase Town Center development, and that there is a policy in place that the town has worked through in order to sort of acquire or gain site control over future phases. Understanding that right now, the site control is pretty limited. The town owns additional acres that could support future phase, but many future phases beyond. That is where there's a lot of private development ownership and that there needs to be a policy in place in order for, to realize the full vision for the Town Center Core. And so kind of highlighting back again for the review and selection process. Again, we talked about a recommended review process of about six weeks. So we get the responses back from developers. The town staff review committee is established. DFI and the town staff would review the proposals simultaneously. And then we do a side-by-side comparison. We've structured the solicitation documents so that, A, one, hopefully, we can evaluate all the responses in an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of projected public participation asks, what the return rate of the development partners is for the project. What kind of program are they speaking of in terms of square footage, heights, density, unit counts? All those things that we can do essentially a side-by-side by side comparison of responders to essentially say which one is meeting the public interest best. The proposed selection process is the town staff review committee would provide summary of those proposals. The town staff would provide a recommendation of council of the preferred development proposal. The town council would select that development team to begin negotiations with them. And then the town negotiates with the selected development partner on a final development plan and a final development partnership structure. And so there's a lot of negotiating that would take place at that time to, one, ensure that the project meets your public interest. And one of those public interests is to most effectively and efficiently use public dollars. So that would obviously, you know, we're asking the developers to do a lot of due diligence during the open period of the solicitation, but there will be a lot of refinement of their concepts during negotiation period also. And so DFI will be there to guide and help and understand, but there's a lot of negotiating that would take place with that developer even after the preferred developer is selected. And so we're looking at sort of the short-term timeline here. We've done a lot of the sort of concept development, financial feasibility, public-private partnership structuring, and sort of strategies around that. We are right now at this red dot here, this November 10 council meeting, the solicitation approval. If the solicitation is endorsed by council, we essentially want to put it together as sort of a 90-day open period. And this is where DFI, what we would do is we would go to our Rolodex of developers, send them the link to the solicitation, and we were asking that the responses be due February 26, taking into consideration holidays. We want to give enough time after holidays for developers to really put together thoughtful responses. And then, as I mentioned, that six-week period where DFI and the town staff would review documents, make sure that we're all on the same page, ask the questions, if we have any clarifying questions we need to get from the development responses, and then put together that package to essentially show you all a comparison of the responses from the developers. And so we were looking at sort of April 2021 is when we would have those responses back to you all. And then kind of looking through sort of an estimated project timeline beyond that, and that's what we wanted to clarify within the solicitation document, is what would happen between April 2021 and construction. And then, again, this is an estimated project timeline based on what we see around other public-private partnerships. But you would have essentially a couple of months to get to an MOU, and that's the memorandum of understanding. And that kind of does the high level, high touch, who's taking care of what responsibilities. And then leaving about a four-month period after that for the development agreement. That's getting to the nitty-gritty. That's where you're really negotiating out, all right, the finer-grain details of what's happening in terms of partnership around public participation, around potential parking agreements and things of that nature. So that's where you can answer the sort of the nitty-gritty, fine-grained details of the development agreement. And the sale of the land or whatever you would prefer to the development partner during that time as well. After that development agreement, that's when the developers would really start to really refine, sharpen their pencils with the design and engineering documents. So that would take to about February 2022. After that, you would get to sort of the entitlement building permits. So again, taking some time to ensure that the building permits, and that sort of falls into you all, how long or how quickly you want to move going through the building permit process. And then the developers would, they could potentially be closing on finance earlier than this, but closing on financing and then mobilizing a contract, the general contractor to the site in June and July, and then construction beginning in August 2022. So that's really sort of an estimated project timeline that we see at DFI, sort of if a development agreement is established in October of 2021. And so I'm going to sort of leave it here as the outcome of this meeting tonight would be council endorsement of this current solicitation of development partners. And then, as I mentioned, what those next steps entail, if it is endorsed, would be releasing the solicitation, essentially sending it off to the, DFI sending it off to the developers in our database that have experience with these types of projects, and then the town, you all posting the solicitation openly to the town's website. So I'm going to pause here and sort of open it up for discussion, thoughts, questions, and/or whatever you would like, however you like to handle it, Brandon.
Thanks, Eric. Mayor?
Okay, looking to see if anyone had any comments or questions for Eric or Brandon. I mean, I know I'm very excited at continuing to move this forward. We had a good discussion last time. The changes were incorporated. I'd recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Eric for all the work that he's been doing over the last couple of years. It seems like we are getting a lot of what the council has asked for in this proposal. There is a reference to affordable housing in the RFP, but the language is very high-level and vague. It doesn't really say like the council would like to have suggestions about incorporating affordable housing into this project. It doesn't say if there would be extra consideration for that. I just want to understand what expected response an applicant would provide that would have them score positive or negative. It's not really clear to me how someone would answer that reference.
So I think how we left it and now I've sort of thought about this in the, in sort of this document was, and I think maybe we could clarify right here, was that a serious affordable housing potential project could be left for future phases of the Town Center. And I think how we've left it in this document is also, hey, developers may have creative solutions about incorporating. Maybe it's micro units that they want to incorporate into, you know, smaller units into this development that, to essentially get to a naturally affordable style unit within the development. So I think developers will have some unique and creative solutions that they could incorporate that could say, hey, these are naturally affordable units that we're incorporating into this development. I don't know if we were going to get to the point of town subsidizing affordable units into this document, but I think... into the, into this document, but I think leaving at that point of, there's been a discussion about affordable as sort of, you know, an interest of the council, and we didn't get to a sort of affordable housing as a major priority within this specific project, but we did talk about it being an interest within the town center core. Now, developers may have a really great response to that, essentially saying, we think we have a solution, and that could be, you know, A, B, or C. And we're not asking that it be a requirement with this development, but we are talking about it being an interest of council. So I think there is some, we wanted to leave it high level because we didn't get to an agreement of what affordable means in terms of what kind of housing that would necessarily be, you know, whether it's workforce housing, whether it's 30% AMI, 80% AMI, or, you know, just sort of, there's a wide range of that. But I think allowing there to be some flexibility for the developer that there is interest from the council and that there is some interest in hearing potentially how you can incorporate it in, we might get a developer providing a really creative solution to that.
And I think that would be great, but I don't think the statement in the RFP really speaks to that. It's confusing because if I read it, I don't know if I'm going to be scored higher as an applicant or, you know, it just, I'm not sure what to do with it.
So Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, I absolutely hear that. I think you described it somewhat the way we were intending for it to be, which is a little bit vague intentionally, again, in part to maintain that flexibility so that it's not something that turns people away. And then the other piece of that is vague because you, as a council, still need to define what affordable housing means to you in terms of what your policy will be and what you hope to do in that regard. So again, intentionally vague so that as you work through that policy and work through your definition, that can definitely be a part of the development agreement process.
Could we modify the statement to say that the council is considering affordable options in the town and a policy that it has not been finalized would be interested in suggestions?
We could if that is what.
Can we bring that part up?
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, because it's.
Bring up that page and perhaps as a.
I don't think it's even going to get a response, is my point. So, because it's not really, just, it's background information.
These will be sent out with a cover letter, correct? So that might be a place also to do some high-level, general statements about we're interested in sustainability, affordable housing, et cetera. Eric, will this go out with some kind of note to your rolodex or how will that go out?
No, I mean, I, it would essentially go out as an introduction to, I mean, there would be, this would be attached within a document, in an email to developers. And again, I would put an email form in the body of the email talking about the opportunity. And that's more of, hey, there's a vision for a town center core, multiple-phase in a fast-growing area of North Carolina. They're probably well aware of Morrisville being by the airport. Now, I think, and I want to make sure that I understand sort of the, you know, we incorporate the affordable housing sort of the language of, we'll entertain, you know, your strategies for incorporating affordable housing units into this development. I'm looking at it here, and I think we got to this point of, it, there's a policy that needs to get developed with the town, I think that was what Brandon was speaking to, to help inform really sort of what you all wanted, what you all mean in terms of affordable housing. There's lots of different definitions of it. And I think that developers may come back with this and say, yes, we can incorporate micro units, like I mentioned earlier, or some other type of, that is sort of naturally affordable or naturally occurring affordable housing.
I would like to see diversity of housing options. So affordable is different to a senior citizen than it would be to a college graduate. So we can leave the word affordable very high level and vague. It just doesn't even seem like it's, you know, it's just a reference, not, you know. I would like to see if they had some suggestions, but I don't see where it's going to be scored or where the, where you would pick that out of the RFP to say you would even need to address it.
Eric, what page is that reference on?
Eleven.
Yeah, that's right there. I had it highlighted in my version.
Yeah, right there, above that, above the highlighted paragraph.
So I just wanted to call that out because as I read this, I was looking for, you know, value to existing residents and future residents and making sure that even in this phase one, we are providing all the good things that we are currently enjoying within our community because we've consistently been rated one of the top cities in North Carolina. And let's just make sure that we infuse those good things that we have today. We have a variety of projects or products. So that language just didn't say that we were going to get anything back at all.
Thank you. I think what we can do, and maybe strengthening the vision, is talk about that mix and diversity of housing that the full town center core would like to incorporate. And because I, how we've always talked about it is, you know, as we develop the policy, we have an opportunity with future phases to really address affordable housing and potentially do a really impactful project with affordable housing. And if we talk about incorporation of this project is, you know, it needs to be really well-thought-through in terms of thinking of what participation may look like in terms of affordable housing. But we could also talk about it as, hey, there's several different development phases that can be incorporated that are in the town center core, and we could talk about that as a diversity of housing. And then we could say, this, right now, we've talked about market rate housing within this solicitation document, but we're also asking developers, if you have some creative solutions which could score you better in your responses for incorporating affordable, you know, what you deem to be affordable units, I think there is that opportunity there. And that's why we left it sort of open-ended there, is we don't, we don't have a specific type of affordable housing that we're talking about with, with Morrisville right now. We don't know what the specific needs are, but developers may have a creative solution for that.
Right. So I think if you're clear about, you know, flexible options, diversity of products, those kind of things, they can, they can understand and they can program in, and it's very crystal clear versus affordable housing just has a lot of different variations, you know. Everyone thinks of it in a different way. It's, you just, and I know there's at least seven definitions sitting amongst the council members, so the variety of product, I think, is the important thing for this.
Okay, so.
The other item is about public gathering. And I know everyone says, oh, this phase two, but public gathering is both, you know, open space as well as a physical building or, you know, something similar to with this chamber or something that we can gather as a community. We don't have that. And it seems like we would lean towards options in the phase one that would offer us more gathering space, whether we leased it or owned it, that would be a preferred thing. And I didn't really see that, at least, maybe that's an MOU thing, but wasn't really sure.
So I think we've discussed that in a couple of ways, one of which is to talk about the town potentially being willing to be a renter, if you will, to occupy some of that space early on. There is reference to that. You know, beyond that, it's a challenge in the sense of only having this six acres and again, needing to reach that ROI to balance our interests with the interest of the developer. So we certainly will have that conversation as part of the developer agreement, but we don't think that it is practical or realistic to require any sort of open space in the document itself, certainly not for phase one.
Yeah, that's, that's where, that's a, that's where I really have some heartburn because we really should be returning value to our existing residents, not our future residents in phase one for them to understand. The library is there, and when the library was being designed, we, for, you know, let go the opportunity to have a classroom in there, which a lot of people are wondering, will be wondering once they get in there, because we were thinking we could lease the space or build some other building in the town center. I'm really regretting that council decision about the library, and we need to have something public with this phase one. And I think there's a lot of work here. I just really think we're missing the fact that we have the ability, we have site control, and we're not building a public amenity in this phase.
Well, and as Brandon mentioned, we do provide that language within this document that, hey, town has interest in public space and gathering spaces and that they would entertain the ability to lease space within this development for communities. So it's stated in there, and I think there's opportunity, once the developer is also selected, to essentially negotiate with that developer to fill that space, if that is a desire of the council, to fill, to establish an interior space. Now, you know, that would have to be determined by council that that's a desire, but we do provide that as something to be considered of to the development community as part of this document.
Okay. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Hey, Eric.
Hey.
Thanks for updating those slides. I want to go back to the slide that talks about the first slide, if you can go back, where the changes were on the RFP PowerPoint.
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let whoever else is controlling the screen here.
Did you have, Councilmember Garamella, can we address it within the RFP or did you want to go back and ask a specific question in the PowerPoint itself?
On the PowerPoint. Our.
All right, Eric Genie's giving us back there.
Yeah, yeah, I have it. So basically, you know, it says like clarified developers are responsible for all relevant permits and fees associated with a development project. And you have given the link on the RFP, but was not clear, what does that really mean? Like, you know, does it mean the, you know, like the payment in lieu for the road in front of them, the access? Because on one side they said, you know, we are, we are building all these infrastructures we have done. So need a clarity around that because, and then giving the link for the development fees and permit, but not really the other fees which, which we are doing for them already. So I wanted to have a good understanding around it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we provided that link that they're up to date with the fee schedule and the fee schedule, those fees for building permits, for payment in, payment in lieu of, for park space, for water sewer from, you know, pooling, other, other fees. And all that's been incorporated into the pro forma that we've modeled to date. And essentially by putting that link there and essentially saying, hey, developer, you're responsible for all relevant permits and fees associated with this project, that's what that means. I mean, we've already talked about that the infrastructure that's been built to support the project, the roads, the sew, the roads, the stormwater, that's, that's sort of on the town, and that's how we've agreed to, I mean, sort of to discuss today was that public participation of the infrastructure, but those fees to tap in to essentially, you know, payment in lieu for park space, that's all stuff that's been built into pro forma that.
So, so, so I'm just trying to understand, like, you know, I, I get what you're saying. The fees and everything is pretty standard, everyone, we are not letting anyone off the hook. But, you know, say, like, we have spent $5 million on the stormwater. Are, other than the fees, the stormwater fees that they're going to pay, are they going to contribute anything to what traditionally they might have to do a stormwater in their six acres, right? And they had to dedicate a piece of land for doing that. So pretty much we are, you know, more, over and beyond that, you know, we are creating the stormwater, we are also giving them a full space of, you know, $330,000 or approximately whatever the acreage is for our own needs, wherever the town is making, especially the fire station, this one, we, we make our own BMPs. So, so that's where I wanted to reemphasize, are we even looking into that kind of point or basically saying, oh, just pay the fees, we are okay? You get my point, right? Like a six acre.
I mean, are you saying you want to, potentially being reimbursed for the infrastructure that you've built to support the project?
Or their fair share. I'm not saying, you know, to do it, you know, like suppose the town engineers are there, they know, okay, this, you know, like a two-acre land of development and this is a stormwater, you know, they might have used half an acre of land only to create their own BMP right there, you know, and that we are taking away and we are using like a, a, infrastructure that we have done. So they're basically flushing water into our BMP stomps as a bigger project. So, so basically, are we trying to recoup any of those costs or basically saying, you just pay the fees and we are okay?
How it's been modeled is, in the pro forma, is essentially that the, the infrastructure costs of the stormwater, of the roads, of the sidewalks, that's all essentially been in that public bucket. Now, if you feel it's a priority to essentially say, hey, developer, you pay your portion for a, you know, for two and a half acre for that, again, that can be negotiated with the developer. We haven't modeled that in, and that will be, you know, with a $50 million project that this potentially is, you know, there might be some, be able to slice off, you know, why the stormwater was put onto the west side of town center or the south side was so that it could open up more development opportunity in the town center core so that you don't have a pond essentially on your main street that could then take away from potential for retail or really maximizing the development potential. So I think.
And exactly. I think you, you're exactly telling what I'm thinking the same way. So the, the point I'm, I'm making and emphasis of this again and again is because when they come to us on the public infrastructure, you know, so we, we can trade off something there because by just giving them assumption like, okay, we have done everything to them and, you know, by the way, we will contribute to the public parking, you know, they, it's, it's an assumption that is left to them. And that's the thing, I don't want to give that, you know. And at the time, it's a negotiation. We can certainly, you know, bring those things up, but just telling them, this is what we have done, technically, if you're giving six acres, half an acre or one acre will be gone for BMP on an ideal land. And that we are taking them, not only 330, we are basically taking the entire infrastructure we have funneled into our BMP storm. That's, that's the thing I'm trying to see, then at the time, that leverage can be used for a public infrastructure, especially in the parking deck for negotiation.
And I think how we've modeled it is essentially to try to get to that pro forma that we think would be attractive for a private developer. Now, again, there could be multiple different hurdle rates that developers would want to hit, but again, I think that's something that can be worked out and would be worked out with sort of, you know, that sort of finer-grained. Again, we, we didn't model those costs, cost sharing, the infrastructure that, you know, has been built to date. We talked all about, you know, we modeled in the permits and those fees to the developer, but, you know.
Hey, I know, I know you don't pass it, so, but leaving that open-ended little bit, the first point, like just by not pertaining them to, you know, giving the link and saying, okay, this is the link where you are, you know, you have to pay all the responsible fees and permits, that's given, that is certainly given, or, you know, are basically putting an extra line as part of your infrastructure cost or something. That, that, that one or two words there can give us a leverage to negotiate, you know, saying, okay, you know, you don't have to do this, you know, in terms, give us this. That's what I'm trying to see.
So, and, and sort of more clarity that there's potential, the infrastructure is being built, but there's a desire to negotiate the, the costs associated with that or reimburse it, reimbursements for it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Something like that, you know, where, you know, a border system or something that, okay, this is what it is, you know, we, we will want a town reimbursement in forms of public infrastructure we're doing so that it, it, it has to be fair to both of us. That's all I'm trying to see. And, and the other question I have is, remember when we had the. And, and the other question I have is, remember when we had the first RFP, we came, you know, we did not have a very, very good, um, tabulation, like, you know, apples, to compare apples to oranges, you know, we, uh, some of the developers did not give, you know, one, uh, bedroom, how many they're having a two bedroom, they're, you know, they were very vague, um, it was all open ended. So this time, in, instead of going to the same thing, it would be good if we can have a tabular column, like, you know, or something that say, okay, these are, fill those, uh, A, B, C, D, E, F, so that we can compare against each one, okay, what are they doing? Because that, that would be very useful, uh, not only for you guys, but also for us when end of the day we are trying to make an addition, uh, it will be easy for us.
Yeah, and, and we do ask and, um, you know, specifics in terms of unit counts, where footage is, um, and I think the big thing to essentially compare developers will be their hurdle rates, they're going to provide a confidential document detailing what their expected rate of return is on this specific project, which you can give us a good apples to apples comparison over how much, what is their sort of rate of return, which informs what a public participation strategy will be. So we've learned a lot from that first where we want to have that as much apples to apples comparison and ask, you know, the, the, the right questions so that we can get those results in a, you know, within this 90-day period that they can do enough work. And again, developers aren't gonna, you know, they're gonna spend some money for any other's response, they're not gonna spend $200,000 of design work during this, not knowing that they don't have the project. So it's sort of asking them the right balance so that we get what we need to compare, uh, knowing that there's still a lot of refinement that's gonna happen down the road as they negotiate with you all.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, but at the last time, I remember very distinctly, like, you know, we did not have all the information, so we had to go with the information that we had at the time and make addition, uh, so I don't want that to be the case again, you know, like, uh, an assumption that, okay, the other person has not put, like, in spite of we asking them, do you have anything in your process to basically go back and say, hey, for your application to be complete, we need this information too, so that it helps us to have, uh, a clear picture. Uh, if they're not, then we are just assuming, uh, and we'll go with whatever we have at the best, but that's not what I, I would like to do.
Yeah, yeah, I, I like the tabular and that's the idea, is having that tabular, uh, table of data that we can compare all, and that's essentially what we're gonna try to create for you all from the responses. We also want that narrative detailing, they're telling their story of why they should be selected, but I think that tabular sort of key information is, is really valuable and that's what we're, we want to get out of the, the requirements of the, the developers in the, in the document, is to essentially get to a table comparing apples to apples of all the responses. And again, I think some, and we're asking those, and if we don't get them in the original response, as what we're hoping, we do have a period of time where we can ask clarifying questions to those developers to get those responses, to make sure that the tables are filled in as much as possible in the same manner. Now, developers may have lots of wide variety of responses and so we have to sort of account for that, um, but I think we'll do our best to get that table so it's essentially as simple as possible to evaluate the responses.
Okay, and, and then the other thing that, I think you mentioned something about the public courtyard where, you know, uh, it will be open. I, if I were staying in that apartment complex, why would I share that with anyone?
Well, and I, we didn't, we didn't require that and, and that's was saying, hey, if you have a creative solutions about incorporating that, yes, please, please address that and talk about that, but again, that, that's where the developers have to put together a response of what they feel is the most appropriate project, whether it's maybe a small publicly accessible courtyard, like there's several developments here in Durham that have small publicly accessible ones, or not even necessarily small, but publicly accessible areas, well, then they may have the private courtyards that have the swimming pool, um, and, and those kind of details. So yes, I think we're allowing developers to provide their solution to, um, you know, I'm not hearing comments here from the, the other council members.
No, that's fine because this is important for me, so if I had to, what, yes or no? Um, and the other thing, the last question I have is, I don't see a timeline for what the town, uh, would fit in, you know, their, uh, their commitment into it. I saw the slide only that talks about, you know, when the development will start and June is when we are saying, you know, we will do a MOU, but, uh, I'm, I'm kind of looking more for March or the slide behind, after that, with all the timelines. Yes, this one. So, so, um, I would like to see if, um, more from Martha or Brandon, what is the town's commitment, at what time, if we had to build, uh, public infrastructure, when will we come to know and how much amount and how much time, so we are having less than six months to invest into that?
So you should have, begin to have the details of that in the MOU. The MOU would be the high level agreement around the basics for a development agreement. Uh, you would know the final details as you moved into that development agreement in October of 2021, so it would be, uh, the town making its some, at least some, if not all, of its initial, uh, investment in FY 2022.
Okay, all right, those are my questions. Thanks.
Eric, I have a quick follow-up. Would it be helpful to have that tabular rubric, uh, presented to the developers in advance so that they can fill it in themselves, so you don't have to hunt and peck and make sure that there isn't a clear understanding of making sure it's apples to apples?
Yeah, I think, um, it's essentially, we, we built it into the, the requirements of, here's what we'd like you to respond with, and it doesn't have that sort of table, um, but, um, I see where you're going, Eric, and I think that could be something that could be added to this would be essentially the table of, here, provide a summary table of this information also. I was expecting to do that on our end, but we could ask the developers to do that as well.
So I think, Mayor, some of the, the balancing there, that, again, circling back to that flexibility we're looking for is that we just want to be careful about how particularly we structure what their response should be. We do want to be able to compare apples to apples, but we don't want to be too, um, dictative in terms of how they submit their information. So I think Eric makes a good point that we can gather that information from their submissions and have the opportunity to go back with them rather than necessarily having that as a component in the RFP going out.
I understand completely, it's a style thing. Uh, Councilmember Robati.
Um, so I just wanted to say that I, I definitely understand the need for flexibility, but I also think to many of the other council members' points that there's no point in not including information that is gonna make us look favorably or unfavorably on a proposal. And I just, I mean, I look, I think there's a lot of information in there about that type of thing, but, um, I did not see, I might have missed it, but I didn't see anything in there about workforce or affordable housing as a component and, um, that's something that, you know, that at least is important to me, that would make me look favorably on a submission. I don't, I guess I don't really understand how that, like, I guess it does limit their flexibility in a way, but I personally would look unfavorably on a submission that did not include that. That seems like relevant information, you know what I'm saying?
I, I do understand what you're saying and, you know, so we did include additional language in the RFP update tonight as opposed to last time that does make reference to the town's interest in affordable housing, um, the, the terminology is there.
Okay, I apologize, I, I probably missed it, it was, it's a long document, I may have missed it, if it's there, thank you very much.
I think it's on page eleven or twelve.
Okay, so, um, we had some good discussion about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robati. So I guess, uh, before we take a vote, I just wanna emphasize once again that this is the RFP that's going out and we want to be really careful to not, uh, consider moving the goalposts when we get our responses back. The MOU should generally reflect what we're putting out there and asking them to do. So, um, I hope that we are well committed to what we see in here and we hope that they are reading our intent, they're probably gonna be watching this meeting, um, about what we look more favorably on affordable housing, on some kind of shared open space. Eric has said in the past that the block two sidewalk facing the street is wide enough that you could close the street and have, uh, a little festival there. So I think we are providing something for our current residents, not just our future residents in future phases. So, uh, we learned from last time that you can't try to jam everything into the first phase, we learned a lot last time through. So I think that this is a very solid RFP, I think it'll get us where we're going on the first phase, um, but at this time I'd entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-334-0 of the Morrisville Town Council, authorizing the issuance of the Town Center Core Demonstration Project Request for Proposal.
I have a motion and a second, Town Clerk Smith, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much, that was a very important step. We are now at item 13, new items. There are four new items on tonight's agenda. A resolution establishing a charter for the Morrisville Smart City Steering Committee, a resolution to adopt CIP policies for land acquisition, town center and greenways, a resolution amending the appointed public body's administrative policy, and a resolution approving the 2021-2022 Legislative Biennium Advocacy Agenda and Related Advocacy Goals. Rick Ralph, our CIO, will present our first new item. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, here tonight to, uh, brief council on a developed charter for the proposed Smart City Steering Committee. This committee, uh, is on the heels of our recently completed, uh, assessment for smart cities as well as our, uh, adopted, uh, smart Morrisville plan. Uh, so what I want to do is just go through, uh, the, uh, charter here and, uh, go through and hit on some of those key points. Uh, we did, uh, send this out to council, um, via email on October 9th, uh, just to receive some initial feedback. Uh, we did receive that feedback and made those, uh, changes as necessary. Uh, so we have the briefing tonight and then an action item, uh, at the next meeting in November. So the first piece, um, that I want to kind of highlight for this Smart City Steering Committee, um, is the proposed membership. Uh, we are, um, aiming for seven technical members and four non-technical members. Um, the reason we're looking at a split, um, while this is a, a technology committee, uh, we feel that it's, uh, important to have that equitable feedback, uh, among each, uh, of the populations, not just the technical folks in the community, even though we are a, a very techn-savvy community, uh, it's important for, uh, other folks who are just simply the end users. Um, the technical members, uh, we are aiming for a 10-year, uh, of experience. Um, we did highlight, um, some areas of expertise that we are looking at, uh, we did expand that from the initial feedback, um, just to get some items and, and some, uh, folks that are, uh, have an area of expertise related to, uh, the smart city realm. Um, we do feel that, uh, the, the Smart City Steering Committee is, um, critical to the, the progress of our smart Morrisville plan, uh, they are extension of our team and, and really a bridge, uh, between, uh, town staff who, who are implementing and, and the community who's, who's, uh, the end user. Um, we do have, um, the, the, the purpose of the committee, which I do want to highlight a couple, uh, of those key aspects, um, and what the real purpose of this, uh, committee will be. Um, really, uh, focused on, on providing strategic guidance on these smart city initiatives, primarily around the public-facing initiatives really identified in the smart Morrisville plan. Um, they could be also suggesting improvements, uh, to existing smart city services that we provide, um, serving as the beta testers for this public-facing technology, um, could be for open, open data, uh, our open data program, the mobile application, or any of those connected park initiatives, uh, that we are moving forward with. Um, also, uh, we would like the committee to evaluate data from, from the various piloted technologies, uh, to determine, uh, any feasibility for, for wide-scale deployment and that could be technology piloted along, uh, the smart corridors that we've discussed, uh, or any kind of waste management, uh, pilots that we are, uh, looking at, uh, currently. Um, we feel that, uh, keeping this committee focused, uh, will provide the most value for, for town, uh, and the members of the committee. Uh, like I said, they are that bridge between the, the folks implementing, uh, these initiatives and, and those end users. So, uh, just to highlight, um, some of the items for, for, uh, the support partners, um, uh, very, very, uh, much aligning with our smart Morrisville plan, uh, we're talking about, uh, educational research institutions as well as, uh, our business community here in Morrisville, uh, we feel that, uh, building that, that, uh, partnership, uh, ecosystem i- is critical to, to the success of this program. Um, we do have, uh, obviously, this is, uh, pretty standard language here, um, as far as town staff support of the committee. Um, uh, we will, uh, manage these, uh, these meetings, uh, preparing these agendas, um, and, uh, coordinating a, a joint annual meeting, um, with town council, uh, as well as providing town council report, uh, twice a year on the committee's status and objectives. Uh, so we did, uh, highlight, uh, like I said, some of that initial feedback from council, um, but I will go ahead and, and open it now for any questions or comments and, like I said, uh, looking to have this as an action item on the November 24th agenda.
Thank you very much, a lot of work went into this. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
Yeah, thank you, and, um, I just have a couple of comments, I'm trying to get back to your, um, document, your charter. I would like to see you open it up, um, if you're gonna require, um, 10 or more years of experience, I feel like the criteria here is a little information technology centric. Um, I mean, I just know from my own experience, my background, my, my degree is electrical engineering, my background is manufacturing automation, I don't, my background would not be considered IT, but in manufacturing automation, we do a lot with sensors, instrumentation, vision systems, robotics, um, I think you need to open up this criteria to more, to not just computer science, IT type of field. I think it could be more automation controls, electrical engineering, even mechanical engineering background, uh, with, you know, emphasis in robotic. That's my only comment.
Absolutely, and, and, and what we do is, we did leave that open for, you know, again, we call them for non-technical members, but, uh, even though they have a, a level of technical expertise, um, uh, they could lie...
I think the criteria for your technical members needs to be opened up and not just be exclusive to information and technology. You need to include more automation control.
Okay.
Can I follow up today?
Yeah, I, I think, um, before we take other questions, I think that's something that we should as a group address, um, you can, well, let Steve go first, do you want to talk to what she just said?
Um, I think the way, I mean, I think information technology, uh, oftentimes can be broader than just, you know, specific tech, uh, you know, issues, so what I think Councilmember Fender's referring to is just looking at, um, you know, incorporating other areas like robotic... referring to is just looking at, you know, incorporating other areas like robotic process, automation, digital transformation, artificial intelligence, machine learning. I mean, Rick, it's probably assumed that maybe, maybe we could, you know, we would have sort of, as we look at experience, I think what Councilmember Fender's saying is that for those that were requiring technical experience, it'd be more than somebody that was a network administrator at a big company, that we want to make sure that we have diversified set of experience, of skill sets among, in the technology industry, so that whatever smart city initiative we would have would reflect that broad range of experience. Is that what you're saying? I think I heard-
Yes, I think, I think information technology is limiting for people in the industry. If I see that, I'm thinking my qualifications would not be acceptable when my qualifications were to be exactly what we'd be doing here with, with sensors and instrumentation and controllers. It would be extremely in line. And I just think the wording needs to be changed. It's too exclusive.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protam-Johnson, and myself. And then we'll get to the remote people to comment on this issue before we bring up a second one.
I was going to say, I'm in agreement. I think we can, we can massage this to not make it so limiting. I think that's, I think that would be appropriate. There, and I don't know how you do, I guess the, I'm looking where it says toward the end, "N-related" information technology field. Maybe it's in that, in that vein, where you put "N-related" something, something-
Automation controls.
Yep, yep.
So I concur, a little less prescriptive, maybe, and limiting. Maybe make it a little bit more open-ended. I'll recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, then Councilmember Robati, if they have issues, they want to speak to this issue before we move on to any other comments. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I really, really appreciate Councilmember Fender bringing up the experience clause, because you just made me think about my own experience. And I have experience working in IT and as a computer system auditor, what I qualify, possibly. I think we need to include not only systems, but devices or equipment in that broad spectrum. The other thing, too, is 10 years' experience is great, but we have a lot of talent in our college students, or, you know, new graduates. And I would hate to lose that view. Diversity of experience, age, and everything, it gives us a balance. And I wouldn't want to take like a computer systems graduate and put them in a non-technical because they don't meet the minimum number of years. So maybe we can look at this language a little bit, you know, in a different lens. And we still want our technical, but we want a variety, if we could. There's a lot of great things that we can do with smart, you know, initiatives that are not just system-based.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Robati, please, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
I just wanted to mention that possibly we could include something about API development and programming language experience. I mean, I think that, that's going to be, that going forward, that's going to be a very important part of the industry. It is already. And that we could benefit from that type of experience quite a bit also, ourselves.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella?
Yes, and we do have a-
Mr. Ralph, go ahead and respond back, please.
I was just going to say, we do have a little bit of application development and programming language in that expertise. But yeah, expanding that, we can definitely explore different language there to make it a little broader, to try to accompany some of the things that council members here have mentioned tonight.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, the final word on this subject?
Um, I think, we got to understand, this is not an IT committee here. This is like a smart city steering committee where, you know, they are trying to partner hand-in-glove with the town development team. And the programming is critical, application development is critical, data analytics is critical, because the IOTs is all the devices we are talking about, the sensors and everything, they all get bucketed into the IOT tab. So, you know, like, I am okay as is, because there is also, the good part is, you're giving an opportunity to both. You know, if they fall, the more important is for us as residents, you know, their interest to it. And both have equal opportunity. It's like, it's not a quota system that you come under IT or you come under non-IT. It does not really matter, as long as there's an interest and you, we see there, you know, they can contribute to the town, a smart city. And, but this is a very, very specialized smart city, you know, like, so the tech, the right technical skills are important for the, you know, for Rick and his team to move forward with the town's vision.
Mayor Protam had a thought?
So, yeah, as we're having this discussion now, it's kind of occurring to me, Rick, are you really, are you really looking for four non-technical members? Or is it, is this whole thing better worded to say the committee will consist of at least seven technical members with the following, and then not, not, not label those other four seats, unless that's really what you're looking for, somebody who has absolutely no IT experience at all?
So, so we can word that a little differently. The reason we specifically mentioned non-technical, so that we did have some feedback from those that are just end users, that might not be looking at it from a technology lens, but might be looking at it just from an end-user lens. I think they offer diverse perspectives, and that is why we, we had it in there, is specifically non-technical.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Ralph, you indicated your willingness to massage the words a little bit around that. Sounds like there's general consensus that we'd like you to do that and make it a little less prescriptive, a little more flexible. We'll move on to the other questions in the queue. Councilmember Rao?
Thank you. Rick, I want to thank you so much for putting this together. It's very exciting to see all of these different initiatives come together. I think in the last year, six months, we've achieved more in this area, and it's unbelievable where we're headed. A couple of questions. First, I just want to know whether, when we recruit members for this committee, if we can also provide guidance to them on how we can increase and enhance citizen engagement. So, for example, I was very impressed that the open data portal is already open. And I know that the town's going to be working on getting the word out. But we ought to be, eventually, even during COVID or after, I mean, you and I know, we've been getting emails from people that live in Morrisville that want to really be involved once we provide these data sets, to create data sets and to get maybe like, smart city sessions going, where we interact with the public and brainstorm and get ideas. So would that be a part of this plan, so that, you know, like, this committee would be able to drive some of those initiatives? Like, for example, Code for America Brigade, some of these open data, even though open data is sort of separate than smart city, it sort of goes hand in hand. So do you see that, this committee being involved in that? Or do you see them being more involved with what Councilmember Garamella said, specifically working with the different departments in our strategic plan, you know, in terms of like, sensors in the, in the parks, the transportation mobility, all those other things that you mentioned?
Yeah, I see a little bit of both. You know, open data is, it is a big part of our smart city plan, and part of that engagement is going to be happening, and this committee will be involved with that. So we are looking at engagement to identify some of those high-value data sets for the open data program, and then even getting citizens involved in a, in a contest in which they host for the most creative reuse of a data set, just to get them involved in, in actually using it versus just going to the portal and viewing the data, actually reusing what we provide. I think it's a, it's a key piece, and this, this committee will be involved in that open data program, as well as that citizen involvement from, from our broader community.
Okay. And then the second, so if anyone's listening tonight, please, you know, if you're in the tech industry, follow this, because it's moving pretty fast. The second final question I have is, is the, the other thing that I think we should have this committee consider is, you know, looking at grants. And maybe you're already doing that with the staff, but, you know, coming with ideas of smart city grants, and, you know, programs that companies are offering. We have so many great companies that are back there, this whole idea of a smart campus and try before you buy. So sort of coming up with this kind of smart campus, which is probably something you guys are already thinking about, but that'd be another idea. So I'd like to see, you know, specific direction that we can provide them, so that when we get these reports, we can actually see, okay, this was a committee, and these are the things that have been achieved as a result. Because we've had, like with certain committees we formed in the past, it's been hard to have specific deliverables that they're measured on. And so, you know, getting a general report saying this is all the great smart city stuff, I'd like to see a more pragmatic approach, which sort of seems like where you're headed with this. But, you know, I guess we have to approve the charter first, and then, you know, maybe we can work offline on that.
Absolutely, yeah. Once we get this going and get the charter adopted, hopefully on the 24th, hit the ground running with recruitment and working with the town clerk and the communications department to, to move forward with that, so we can get to work.
Great, well, great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please, followed by Councilmember Robati.
My comments were covered in the earlier section. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati?
Mine also. Thank you, Mayor.
And are we going to get a trifecta? Councilmember Garamella?
I, I think you're going back the same thing that we already did.
Okay. Sounds good. Seeing no other comments or questions, we really appreciate it. I love the fact that there's going to be work plans and reporting twice a year. I think that's going to help keep everyone on track and give people goals and objectives and things to celebrate as we move along, because this is an important process for the town. So we look forward to voting on that on the 24th. Look forward to seeing how you massage a little bit of the requirements for those seven technical members. Thank you very much, Mr. Ralph.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeanie Hooks, Director of Management Services, will facilitate our next item.
Good evening, again. We, we just wanted to, so it's my pleasure to present to you actually three policies for adoption. And I've crafted a resolution for you to enact these policies. So this is definitely to work. We have a land acquisition policy, a town center policy, a greenway-
Jeanie, I'm sorry, they're saying they can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? All right. Can everyone hear me at this point? Bren? Good. All right. Let me go again. I'm excited. We have land acquisition policy, town center policy, and a greenway policy. And it's really been built based on your collective feedback. And, and we're excited to get these three policies put in place. Crafted a resolution for you for adoption. And we have talked about these drafts, had some minor adjustments we've put in place for you, and others we didn't have any feedback on. So with that, just a reminder that we have two other policy staffs working on, the transit-oriented development and the affordable housing. Looking forward to bringing those actually drafts to you in November 24th meeting. So after policies are adopted, staff will actually be working to begin processes of setting protocols to really operationalize these things and put them in play. So with that, I turn it over to council.
Excellent. Looking around to see if anyone has any comments or questions on these three policies. We've been through them a few times already. We appreciate all the updates that you've made to bring them to this point. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati now.
Hey, Jeanie, I just wanted to say that, to thank you for making that, the changes that I requested to the eminent domain section. I think that you nailed it. So thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, we're scheduled to vote on those on the 24th. We look forward to seeing the two new policies in draft form as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin L. Hudson, Strategic Performance Manager, will facilitate our next two items. Ms. Hudson?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the councils. Everyone able to hear me?
You can.
All right, great. So first item I'm going to go over with you tonight is an update to our appointed public body's administrative policy. I'm going to do just a couple of high-level updates with you. Originally, this policy was established in April of 2013, and periodically, we update it just to provide for any specific content changes or anything relating to current policy, current committee needs and guidelines. Policy was last amended in May of this year, creating item 11, and that was the meeting rules of procedure during a state of emergency. That just allowed our committees to be consistent with state law and town council policy and rules of procedure, so that they could continue their work and meet remotely. Quickly, to review some of the major elements that we have captured in this particular update, staff presented some draft options for an attendance exception policy that has been discussed with town council during roundtable work sessions last fall. We have removed references to the Board of Adjustment. We have expanded guidance for subcommittees, which was discussed in brief with you. And we've provided some additional clarification for roles, responsibilities, just to allow us to work more effectively between council, staff, and our advisory committees. And similarly to the town council rules of procedure, we've also included a reference of policy edits and historical changes at the end of the document. This was a collaborative effort amongst staff, really to capture and incorporate a number of elements that have been the focus of some council and staff and committee discussion and feedback over the last year. So we took this opportunity to also perform a more comprehensive review of the full policy. And we've outlined the full list of proposed amendments in your agenda item executive summary, which I believe is on the screen in front of you. A redlined version of the proposed policy changes is provided in Attachment 1. Final draft incorporating those proposed policy changes is provided as Attachment 2. And the current appointed public body's policy is provided as Attachment 3. So the proposed policy changes do have a provision to review advisory committee charters once every two years. And staff proposes that we begin the charter review first quarter of calendar year 2021, in conjunction with a review of annual work plans to be submitted by committees as well. Happy to answer any questions you all may have, or if Town Manager Paige has anything additional she would like to add.
No, I think Erin's done a fantastic job. She's, she's captured everything. A lot of, of the update was comprehensive. It's based not only on staff's involvement with the committees, but information we've gleaned from your discussions about appointed advisory committees and two recent joint committees and liking that. We've tried to operationalize that. Yes, that's more work for all of us, but we think it will enhance the connectivity of- of what council is expecting those appointed bodies to do and the guidance that they're looking for from you. So that's a collaborative, two-way street that we think will strengthen the relationship between council and the advisory committees. Then we will be able to share that with the committees in a better way. So a lot of the changes are related to that and your discussion.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of questions. For item V as in Victor 1A, is there any reason we can't have finalized calendar for the upcoming year on January 1st or ideally December rather than January 31st as listed in there?
So I'll, I'm sorry, I'll answer that.
Sure.
That is our effort.
Okay.
But what we've had in the past is we get to that last meeting and for some reason there's not a quorum or something, and that's what's happened in the past. But the committees are already working on those calendars.
Okay, because their new people come on right in December also, so I understand their sort of thing there. I just want to acknowledge and thank you guys for item V to VI. If someone moves, they do not become immediately ineligible to serve, but they're ineligible for membership reappointment. So that's very nice for people who want to continue serving until they're unable to. So these look really good. I'm looking to see if anyone else has comments. Mayor Pretem Johnson?
So I have, I'm going to start where the mayor left off, because I have a question about that, because I was conflicted. There were a number of places where, you referenced one place where it says when they move out of town, but yet there's another place in the document under definitions where it says, "We're authorized by town council, a non-resident with specific subject matter experience or expertise can be appointed to a seat." Is it, am I reading that right, Erin? I guess, I guess here's my question. Can we appoint or reappoint a non-Morrisville resident to a committee? That's really my question.
So I'll take, you can if you choose to. So for an example, and you saw it highlighted, or I think it's highlighted in your redline copy, as Rick and Jeanie and I in particular were talking about the Smart City Steering Committee, you could very well have members that are interested, that work in the business community in Morrisville, but may not live here. So, and that would be very similar to how you have previously appointed a blue-ribbon task force on transportation with those subject matter expertises. I think that the key part is, is you outline that in the charter for those committees that you want to consider that for.
So I thought that was just for that one committee is how I interpreted that.
Okay, well, so that's what I want to clarify, because you also in this document have eliminated wording around the senior advisory committee. And there is one member on that committee who is not a Morrisville resident that fell in the crack when we required a residency requirement. And we told that person that they would be eligible to reapply and that once they did not reapply, then they would lose their eligibility to be considered. And I want to know where that one person falls and are they falling in a crack again?
So I would request that you share that information with me, because I was completely unaware of that and was not aware that there were any situations where there would need to be a grandfathering.
And that's exactly what the situation is. And it wasn't that the council would automatically vote for them, because clearly there could be, you know, if you didn't perform your duties, you didn't show up, whatever, but that they would be eligible.
Yeah, if you will share that, that is just information I don't think that any staff was aware of. And we were trying, one of the changes that we made is there were, there were some outdated references based on when the policy was originally, and I think we considered that one of them. But if that's still in play, we can reincorporate that.
That's why that wording is in the document, and I see that it's been eliminated for that specifically for that committee. And I'm not opposed to opening up, you know, the Smart City Steering Committee to non-residents, but, you know, residents that work in Morrisville. I reworded it. I did have a couple of the really quick things. I love the fact that we're going to, well, let me back up. I love the way the Smart City Steering Committee charter was written. And so that could be like a model for all the other ones as we continue to modify them. And I like the idea that we're going to review the charters. We did meet with two committees already, and especially the one, the education committee, we told them we would give them some more specific information related to goals and their roles. So if we're going to, this is a request, if we're going to start doing that early next year, could we maybe start with them since we already have had that conversation with them? That would be my request. And then the second one is that the, our environmental committee, they, we've met with them too, but hopefully we'll be able to incorporate some more of the sustainability language within their charter too. So I would hope maybe they would be kind of up at the top of the list too to take a look at moving forward. But I like, I like the idea that we're going to review them and there is a lot of work in this document, for sure, a lot of work. So thank you, Erin.
Yeah, Ms. Hudson, thank you very much. A lot of our feedback over the last year is incorporated in this document. So we look forward to seeing this again in two weeks. Thank you very much. You also have the next item, 13D as in Delta.
Yes, I do. And thank you for your feedback there. I can't take full credit for that item. As I said, that was a collaborative effort and we all look forward to being able to work more productively on that. So the next item is to prepare you all to start the conversation and start thinking about the upcoming legislative session that starts in January. So the North Carolina League of Municipalities has a legislative policy committee. They have appointed staff, local government elected and appointed officials working together to develop some proposed municipal advocacy goals for a statewide advocacy agenda, so to speak. NCLM established some municipal principles, they established some focus areas, they had previously adopted a Vision 2030 operating principles document. They're vetting all of the proposed goals through those guidelines and provided the timeline and those supplemental documents within the agenda item. Historically, Morrisville staff and council will collaborate and define areas of focus specific to Morrisville that can be included in an advocacy agenda. And the collaborative effort of any feedback that was received is noted in the attached resolution to the agenda item. Staff did organize the feedback that was provided within the NCLM focus areas. So submitted topics that weren't specific to Morrisville haven't been included in the advocacy agenda at this time, but they are captured in the collective feedback document. So additionally, as we move forward, we are going to continue to work to coordinate face-to-face engagement opportunities to the extent possible with our delegates, likely near the first of the new year shortly thereafter, just to allow us to continue to enhance those working relationships, potentially discuss any options for proposed local bills, any ideas that may align there, knowing that all local bills do require legislative sponsorship in the General Assembly. As a result of the November 3 election, there are some adjustments to the makeup of our decision-making partners. We have maintained our three Morrisville House and one Senate delegate. Those did not change. So we're excited to have the opportunity to continue strengthening those relationships. I'll include a full update of any of the changes in those representations in your next news and notes item. But wanted to just have the opportunity to discuss with council any of those items that you see on the resolution that you may want to adjust wording on, or if there's anything you would like to add or remove, anything you have questions on.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. I have a quick suggestion. For the racial bias training, I'd suggest adding language to provide funding for the training if it is being required, so we don't create an unfunded mandate. Because that's something we're trying to push back against.
Okay.
And if, before our next one, if you could, are those listed on the recommendations? If you could give us a comparison list of which ones were not included? You said that there were some that didn't fit onto the NCLM goals. If you could just highlight those at the very end so that we know.
Sure.
What didn't make it and if there's any plans to incorporate them moving forward or if they die on the vine at this point.
Yeah, and I can speak to that really quick, if I may, Mayor Colley. Essentially, just items that had a more statewide applicability, really was trying to pull out those that maybe had more applicability just to Morrisville directly. But certainly, I will highlight those in the document for your November 24th meeting and be happy to have additional discussion about that as well. Apologies.
No, no apologies. That's, you've put together a really nice brief here, so we really appreciate you getting everything together. I'll recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretem Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am a little bit surprised that the solicitation for ideas and suggestions is actually so mature that we could vote on it tonight. I thought we were actually doing some brainstorming and we would have more council discussion. So I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, as it's written here, it's just harder to take off and stuff like that. So when I read this, I just felt like there were so many things, so many things that we wanted to do, we didn't have focus. I'd like to know what our top three initiatives are for Morrisville or issues for Morrisville. In the past, we've identified areas where we wanted to have local bills, and we proposed that with our delegation, our Wake County delegation, and we've been able to, you know, usually be successful. And this here just seems less personal to me. It seems like we're just kind of, you know, endorsing the full agenda, and I'm sure there's items missing. But I would like to have more of a conversation with the council about these topics. I like NCDOT, obviously, because I'm a roads person. But is it appropriate for the council to say that we want to have reduced class size? I do think it's an issue in Morrisville, but is that better, you know, supported at the county level directly to the state, you know, legislature? So there's questions I have. So I'll stop there, because I want other people to have time before midnight.
And if I may as well, thank you for that feedback, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. I think that's really probably what I would foresee this conversation being as well, is if there's things that are captured on this list that council does not feel are reflective of or applicable to Morrisville, that, like you said, may be applicable countywide or may be statewide applicability, then let's have that discussion. And if we need to pare down this list, let's do that so that it can be as reflective of Morrisville specifically as it possibly can be. I appreciate the feedback.
Okay, so as Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson indicated, why don't we go ahead and get initial thoughts from everybody and we'll circle back. So I have Mayor Pretem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rao, then Councilmember Fender, please.
So I'm going to echo what Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson said. I think that we do need to have some more conversation. There are some items on here that we've never had a conversation around, and I think that's really important. And I'm going to apologize, Erin, when a lot of these items on here, I gave you, and I may have misinterpreted what you were looking for. I thought you were, you were looking for information to share with the league and more at a broad statewide emphasis. And so, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that this is, and maybe I'm, I need to, maybe I need, I need to reread the resolution here. I'm not sure this is the legislative agenda for the town of Morrisville. This might be some input to share with the league on issues that were here. But, so I need to kind of think that through a little bit more. And then, and I think we all need to have a conversation. And then I agree also with the concept of we should be strategizing on maybe the top three things we want to work on if we want to adopt a town of Morrisville legislative agenda. And then the last comment I'll make is, I brought up the one about the implicit bias training, and I did not mean that specifically for law enforcement officers. When I shared that, even when I was on my league input call, I talked about it for all, for all of us, you know, staff, elected officials, not just one specific department or, I would, I would, that makes me uncomfortable. They're not the only ones that need implicit bias training, quite frankly. And to the non-funded mandate, that was another one of my bullets. I didn't want any unfunded mandates, so I'm 100% behind, you know, if the state's going to require it, that it, that it come with. I was looking for them to help with statewide training in implicit bias. But anyhow, that's my thoughts right now.
Okay, good. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I think much of, much of what I was going to say has already been said. I mean, I agree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson and Mayor Pretem Johnson that there should be, I think, a more focused approach. So perhaps shortening the list, I mean, I was hoping we'd have a little bit more time to brainstorm. I think that one thought is that, you know, the reality of the situation is that the legislature wants seats in the House and the Senate. So we're going to have, you know, we're going to have to work with the majority leadership too, to make sure that we're getting them at the table for some of these issues and trying to build bridges, leveraging our Wake delegation. But what I think is not a good use of time is to meet our delegation, knowing that, you know, especially after this election, they're not going to have as much pull to get some of the things done. But I think, like, local bills could be good, anything related to transportation, more investment in Morrisville for economic development. The reduction in class size, the dangerous thing there is that, as Senator Choudhury's reminded me in the past, the General Assembly's bills of reducing class size have actually resulted in the overcrowding solution we've had, because they take away seats from other schools. So I think we have to be very careful with just going and saying we want to reduce class size, I think. I mean, that's what I've heard from, so I mean, just, I just want to make sure that, I mean, we research that before we go ask for something that's actually going to crowd our schools more. Because that's, the General Assembly's approval of reducing class size, from what I've gathered, is why our public schools in this area have lost seats.
The note on here is to remove that woman.
Oh, remove it, okay. I thought you said it was that, okay. Okay, then I'm perfectly fine. But I think we need to come up with a strategy, like we did last time, having people here was very productive. But then maybe when we go over there, having some meetings with, you know, some of the people that have won, you know, Senator Gunn, some of the others on the Republican side, you know, just to say, hey, look, you know, we're the 10 fastest growing city in the state or livable town in the country, and, you know, you've been to Morrisville and this is what we want, right? We're going to have to have those conversations, or whatever the league wants or whatever we want, it's just not going to, especially going into a short session. Those are just my thoughts.
Councilmember Fender, please.
So when I read this this past week, I am agreeable to a lot of these initiatives. And I guess I don't have a problem that if the league has come up with these five focus areas of Morrisville getting behind them and providing them support, I guess my question is more of what, how is this resolution going to be used? What is the league going to do with this if we passed it? Do they, are they looking for individual municipalities to get behind? Do they, are they looking for individual municipalities to get behind them to provide more support together?
So, let me, if I may, add some context and Erin can join. So, the league has changed their process for putting together their biennium legislative agenda. There used to be a very robust committee structure. Actually, Councilmember Jennifer Robinson is the president of the league this year and is sort of spearheading the change in the process. So, there was a call for invitations to be a part of a much bigger, broader committee that both Erin and I applied for and both of us were appointed to that. So, that's the good news. The more challenging news was they really fast-tracked the process. And immediately, and I think some of that's probably the virtual COVID-related. And so, I think it's fair to say that Erin and I didn't realize that they were looking for goals from day one and are already midway through the adoption process. And we did not want council to be left out of even participating in that league process. So, there's a couple things, let me pause and see if Erin wants to add anything there first before I continue.
Yeah, Martha's 100% correct.
Okay, so Erin and I talked about, okay, how could we engage council pretty quickly in this process? And so, Erin did draft the information about trying to gather and collect your ideas. And what you see here is just sight unseen for everybody, just the collection of what was submitted to her with no frame of reference. We've provided you the work that's already been done at the league level with the municipal principals, et cetera. And you can support that advocacy agenda. And I think that you can identify those here that are gonna align with those statewide goals. I would tell you, you have time to continue to brainstorm and call some of those priorities that either we're gonna advocate and start prepping our legislative agenda for future asks or that are appropriate for local bills. And I think you can do that in two steps. You can support the league's agenda and still continue your brainstorming discussion if you'd like to do that. And again, I'm gonna pause and see what Erin has to say about that.
I would concur.
I hope that's helpful.
Yes, that's helpful. I will tell you, though, the wording in this proclamation is, it says approves the town of Morrisville advocacy agenda.
And Erin and I can start working tomorrow to get that modified for council to look at if that's the direction you provide to us. You've actually given us some better direction already just in this conversation.
And what I will offer too, if I may, Mayor Colley. So, one of the things that we've learned from our conversations with the league is to try to ensure that wording is actionable and streamlined. And so, any of the ideas that were shared with me that seemed applicable for Morrisville or that were applicable for Morrisville is really what you see in the resolution. Anything that really seemed to fall more into a county level or more of a statewide level is still in our collaboration document. And that was my first pass because, again, I knew that conversation would take place tonight and council could reword, we could streamline, we could add. Again, the discretion is yours. And to the comment that the final clause there is approving the advocacy agenda and the league goals. Historically, the advocacy agenda for the town does incorporate both its own goals and essentially a position supporting the league goals. Martha is absolutely correct. If the council would like to state or express some support for the league goals separately and continue this conversation for some period of time, we can certainly work to support that as well.
Do, the league usually affirms their goals at their annual meeting. So, is that not happening this year?
They have completely revised the process for, I mean, the league meeting's been moved to May. So, they have completely revised the process. There is not a advocacy goals conference in December this year.
So, how do we affirm their goals if they're just, are we just affirming their core municipal principles then?
Well, that's our, I mean, we don't have to take any action. It's whether you want to be proactive in a support of the league goals or participate in the process. There is a committee, there had been a call for, I'll say, brainstorming and focus groups and individual entities have probably been submitting to this committee. And that's where we were trying to get in as well.
Okay, because I think some of us were on some of those calls. Councilmember Fender?
Just one more quick comment, but I agree with Mayor Pretem on the implicit bias training. I don't think it's right to just require law enforcement officers for that type of training. I think we all need it. I need it. I wouldn't want to just focus on law enforcement.
So, are we revising?
Mayor Colley, if I-
Go ahead, Ms. Hudson.
I'm so sorry. There is certainly a delay between remote and in-person. I don't believe I answered Councilmember Fender's question earlier when she asked what happens with the advocacy agenda, who uses it, where does it go? So, I did want to provide a response to that. Historically, again, once town council has gotten to a point and is ready to approve an advocacy agenda, we share that with a couple of partners. We share it with the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce. Typically, they will ask for our advocacy agenda. We also share it with the league, with the legislative advocacy group there. Typically, the town of Cary will also either ask for or we will provide it to them. Many times, we have some areas of alignment there, so that also just helps to support our regional, local collaborative relationship. And also, just wanted to answer or refer back to Mayor Colley's question. Per the policy development process that the league has now approved for this process, they will be finalizing and voting on these ideas virtually with the full league membership in January, based on recommended ideas that are approved by the league board of directors in December.
Okay. And the legislature comes back into session when?
January.
January.
In January.
Short session.
Okay. So, would it be appropriate to brainstorm a little bit tonight and then circle back on this and not necessarily think about approving it on the 24th or?
So, I, so, there are two more Wednesday, so there is actually one scheduled tomorrow. Erin, are you listening in tomorrow?
I am.
Okay. My intention is, is to listen in tomorrow if I'm able to do that. Let Erin and I listen to that tomorrow and give you an update and perhaps some better guidance that will better inform your brainstorming than doing that tonight. We'll be able to give you, I think, some progress, status updates, and what happens next before our next meeting. In fact, there'll be two of those before our next meeting.
Okay, and in the meantime, if this list sparks anything else, we should just send an email to Erin to say this is something that we'd also like to be considered, keeping in mind that we're looking to pare this down, not make it bigger, but we're still in the brainstorming phase.
And if Erin and I brainstorm, we may be able to help start synthesizing sort of like a CIP prioritization tool, which ones you might individually be prioritizing. Because this was some of your collective or individual input, not a collective discussion. So, that might be something we'll have time to do based on this discussion.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, Martha, we have a board meeting on December 10th. I think that's, I don't, we don't have the agenda, but I think those things will come out at that meeting too.
You mean a town council meeting on December 10th?
No, the NCLM meeting, the board of director meeting on December 1. Yeah.
I think Erin and I may follow up with you to get some additional information as well, if that's okay with you, Councilmember Garamella.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that one's a little bit on hold until we get some more feedback. Next item. Now, we're at 14, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. Wanted to remind everyone, town offices will be closed tomorrow for Veterans Day. Please visit our Facebook page to watch our ceremony at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. Town offices will also be closed on November 26th and 27th for the Thanksgiving holiday. The Saturday, November 28th, right after Thanksgiving is what we hope will be the best shopping day of the year. And in partnership with the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce, we encourage everyone to shop small, to support local businesses as part of the National Shop Small Campaign. See the website morrisvillechamber.org to register your small business to be part of that event. Tuesday, December 1st, the chamber will be hosting our annual State of Morrisville event. Keep an eye on social media for more details about that event. And also, please save the date of Friday, December 4th. We're not exactly sure what form our annual tree lighting will take this year, but we are keeping to the tradition of our first Friday of December to start the season. Now, we're at item 15, council manager comments. We will start with Mayor Pretem Johnson, please.
So, Brandon, are you gonna talk about the FAA meeting, the public presentation meeting that's coming up later this month?
I'm sorry.
The FAA public presentation meeting that's coming up later this month, was anybody gonna mention that?
We certainly can.
In staff updates?
I don't want, I'm-
Or you may just have done that, ma'am.
Well, all right, when we get there, you can talk about it. Because I, well, any, there's a public meeting on November 17th. The Publix invited a virtual meeting to talk about or to hear about FAA's update to their landing and departure procedures. So, it's November 17th at 6:00 p.m., and I believe it goes till 7:30, but I don't know the agenda. I don't know if it's a drop-in or presentation, but we are sharing that on our social media.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so go to the town of Morrisville, go to the town of Morrisville website, social media. Clearly, the airport is instrumental in or is important to this town. And any changes to their procedures are important to our citizens. So, November 7th at 6:00 p.m. And then, the only other thing, and I, we're probably, oh, no, I got two more things. We're probably all gonna say this, and I just want to congratulate all those that were elected to office this past week, a week ago today on November 3rd. Congratulate all those that were elected or re-elected and also congratulate all those that ran. It takes a lot to run for office, so I want to extend our thanks to those that were a part of this very important democratic process here locally and, of course, in the country. And then, the last thing I'm gonna repeat again, Thursday, November 19th, is World Pancreatic Cancer Day. If anybody is interested in learning more about the local group here, we have a Pancreatic Cancer Action Network Raleigh Durham affiliate here in the Triangle. We are here to offer support. We are here to help patients, caregivers, family members, and the medical community. And you can reach out to me and I will get you in touch with the folks that you may need. And if you wear purple on November 19th, we all would greatly appreciate that. And I think we have a meeting on the 19th, so I'll see who's wearing purple from the folks here in this meeting right now. So, thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, I'm slated to go next, followed by Councilmember Fender. So, first, I want to thank the many friends and neighbors who supported the Green Hope High School Give Back Food Drive this past Sunday. Over 16,000 pounds of food were collected at seven sites in our area, including our driveway in Preston. These donations will help keep the Dorcas Food Pantry stocked for those in need and is another example of how our community is so very supportive of our neighbors. Wanted to also let people know that at Morrisville Elementary School, at the first and third Saturdays, 11:30 till 1:00 p.m., the food security of Western Wake County is giving out dry goods and often produce and meals from HSNC Temple. So, that's another way that the community is supporting itself. Dorcas is also sponsoring the Launch Cary Entrepreneurial Support Program, which is open to both Morrisville and Cary startup businesses. For more info, please visit launchcary.org and attend the informational meeting on Monday, November 16th at noon via Zoom to learn about the program, including one class a week for 10 weeks. Their mission, to develop entrepreneurs and small businesses in under-resourced communities in Cary, Morrisville, and some more surrounding areas by providing access to business development services, networking opportunities, and potentially some small modest grants. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. Unfortunately, due to the weather, we are limiting tomorrow's ceremony to a very small group. Virtually, we will recognize and acknowledge the gratitude we have as a community for those who have served and many who continue to serve. Our country's greatness is built on the foundation of their courage and sacrifice. The sacrifices which our veterans make, including spending time away from their loved ones to keep us and our loved ones safe, can never be repaid. For time is our most precious commodity. Service is not what the women and men of our armed forces do, it is who they are. To every veteran, we owe you our thanks, but more than that, we owe you our freedom. There's no way to adequately thank our veterans for the sacrifices they make for our freedom, but every day and especially tomorrow on Veterans Day, we have to try. To all our servicemen and women, both past and present, thank you, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Fender?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
I wanted to thank all of our Morrisville veterans for their service, particularly Chuck Rabadi, who served in the Marine Corps and who gave up his traditional Marine Corps dinner of steak and mashed potatoes tonight so that I could go to a council meeting. Also, wanted to wish everybody a Happy Diwali and to extend a welcome to Linda Fournette, the new Chamber of Commerce head. I'm really excited that she's on board and so looking forward to working with her. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Well, three of my comments were already made, so I'm gonna waive those. But the only thing I wanted to add is thank the veterans, always. I want to thank Tamil Sangam for their donation of 2,000 N95 masks to our Morrisville Fire Department. Very grateful for them to do that. And I want to, I'm really excited about the Open Data Smart Cities. And I want to, I want to wish Brandon Zudema a happy one-year anniversary. I just realized that, I think you joined in November, I think November 12th. I keep pretty good notes, have a diary, was it?
November 4th, made it a year.
It's been the longest year of my life. It's been a great year in Morrisville.
Hope that wasn't due to me.
It's been the longest year in our life. For me, it's been the longest year because of COVID, so I feel like I've known you for years and I've only known you for a year. But I just want to thank you so much for all the work that you've done, working with Town Manager Paige, and happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Well, thanks, Mayor. I would just like to say thank you to all our veterans for their service. And we also have veterans with four paws, service dogs, are also part of our military. We also owe them a debt of gratitude. And I really was sad this week when we lost Alec Trebek, our Jeopardy, you know, national icon. But it speaks volumes to the research that we've been doing in the pancreatic cancer sector. And I will be wearing more purple this month, but I have hope that treatments are improving and extending the quality of life for people that are affected and their families. So, thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Again, yeah, Happy Veterans Day and thanks to all the veterans for their service. And the Saturday is Diwali, so a lot of fireworks will go. And it's during the COVID time, just be safe. I think the spike is going up and the next two months will be pretty critical. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garamella, for mentioning that. The three W's are all the more important. Please wear, wait, and wash because it's- Please, wear, wait, and wash, because it's really important. And I think that, going to pass it to Assistant Manager Zudma, who's going to give us an update on that particular item right now.
Yes, sir, thank you. As some of you, I'm sure, have already heard, the governor issued Executive Order 176 this afternoon. It's effective this Friday, the 13th. It does two things, one of which is to extend Phase 3 through at least Friday, December, I believe it's the 3rd. And then the other more significant change is that it reduces the cap on indoor mass gatherings from 25 back to 10. So the message they shared today was particularly around using caution as we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, which is obviously traditionally a gathering time, to just be really thoughtful about if you do that, and if you do, how you do that, so that we know that we are keeping each other safe, following the three W's, doing everything we can to minimize the impact as we see those numbers continue to climb. In our case here, we are theoret, well, we are actually, not theoretically, actually exempt from that cap, given that we are a government entity conducting business. However, it will be our intention, moving forward, to continue to stay as close to that number as we can. So as you saw tonight, we have reopened our doors, if you will, to allowing in-person public comment, but that'll be done one person at a time, so that we do not increase our numbers. Anyone who visits Town Hall, we have our temperature scanner, a facial scanner that is now in service. So as you all saw tonight, we're asking everyone, including our own council members, to sign into the building for the purposes of tracking when necessary tracing, and we ask that of any citizens or visitors that might come as well. And the other thing I would mention, just briefly, is our stewardship program, which is being sort of pioneered through our Parks and Recreation Department, along with our Public Works Department, has kicked off. And this Saturday, there will be tree plantings. That will be the kickoff of that event. And if you have not already signed up, I believe we still have a little bit of capacity left for that. You can visit the town's website, or you can email Kyle Cooper with the Town of Morrisville's Parks and Rec Department to get signed up for that. We do ask that you let us know in advance if you're coming, just so we can manage those numbers at that event safely as well. Thank you.
And to be clear, is that to the public, or are you just offering that to the council members?
No, that's to the public. We, that is the kickoff of the stewardship programs. Again, there, there is designated spaces for that, so that we will do that safely with social distancing and with face coverings. But again, we thought it was important to, to move that program forward and to do that tree planting, because we also made a commitment to you collectively earlier this year that we would do that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Town Manager Page, did you have any additional staff comments or updates? Okay. Thank you, everyone, staff and council, and our visitors today. We did a lot of good work tonight. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I will do that. Pursuant to, let's go on a statute, 143, 318, 1183, a move that we go into closed session for discussing an attorney-client privilege matter, including involving the case of tri-regrating and paving versus the Town of Morrisville.
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion entered closed session, passage unanimously.
Okay, it is 10:06.
So, Mayor, I apologize.
We have a new link, right?
Yeah, so we're going to do it a little differently this evening, just as a reminder, particularly for our remote members, they should have an invitation to a separate team's meeting. So we'll need them to exit this team meeting and to rejoin the separate team meeting, and we can explain a little bit about that when we get into the meeting.
Okay. And just for anyone watching or listening, we are done with the public e, business for this evening. It is 10:07, we are in closed session. Thank you very much for watching. We're going to take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 10:17. Thank you.